Hi, my name is Carla Stennett and I'm the 3rd grade teacher at Temperance Elementary School. I would like to say thank you to the Amherst County Education Foundation. They recently accepted my grant for an ECHO Show. Since students are required to sit in their seats more than ever as we deal with COVID-19, an ECHO Show allows a touchless way to access music videos, read alouds, poetry, brain breaks, timers, and even daily jokes. The students are loving the brain breaks throughout the day. We can also ask Alexa questions such as, "Alexa, how long is the Amazon River?"
The Amazon is 4,345 miles long.
Great. The ECHO Show is a great tool and I thank the Amherst Education Foundation for supporting the teachers and students of Amherst County.
Hi, my name is Julia Simon. I'm a 1st grade teacher at Amherst Elementary and I use the Amherst Education Foundation mini-grant to purchase these lap desks for my students. We take them outside to do our reading work and we use them in the classroom for our schoolwork. Thank you so much for giving me the money to purchase these. I'm really thankful for it.
Hello, my name is Sandy Jenin Snublet. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Amherst Elementary School. I'd like to thank the Education Foundation for providing our students with lots of STEM materials to work on in centers while they're in the library. It allows them to use their creativity and their innovation skills as well as cooperation to help build their own designs and use their own ideas to create things that they want to see.
Hi, my name is Naomi Giles and I'm the School Librarian at Temperance Elementary School. I want to say thank you to the Education Foundation for two grants that I received last year that have drastically changed my library and impacted it in a very positive way. So, the first grant I received was for these PlayAway audiobooks. And these are just little battery-charged books that are audio format. I did not have any audio format prior to this in my collection, so the kids absolutely love these. I cannot keep them on the shelves. It's primarily for 2nd through 5th graders and they can take these little books, put their headphones in, and listen anywhere they go. On the bus, at home, whether they're on vacation, wherever, they can listen to their audiobooks and they absolutely love it. I also received an iPad and I use this with my green screen. So, this is great when I collaborate with teachers, we're able to do some really neat projects with the students. We can also make school-wide videos and the kids love using it and learning about that technology. So, thank you to the Education Foundation.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Fitzgerald and I am the Art Teacher here at Amherst Middle School. We just wanted to say a huge thank you to the Education Foundation and the grants that they provided this year for art education here. We were severely impacted by the COVID restrictions this year and not being able to have community sets of art supplies. So, we couldn't share our supplies like we usually do when we're working on art projects. So, the Education Foundation grant money was used to purchase more supplies, individual art kits, to provide individual art kits to our students so that we could use a variety of mediums and use lots of different materials instead of just paper and pencil. So, one of the things that we have done this year is to use these cubbies for each individual student. They have their own little basket that contains their supplies. They have non-consumable supplies that were provided, so everyone would have their own, like scissors. And they also had consumable supplies like glue sticks, markers, Sharpies, pencils, that sort of thing. And what I would do each project would be to fill up these baskets with what they would need to use for that project. And then they could all keep all of their papers and our projects separated here in the cubbies. We did some really cool stuff this year. One of the things that Education Foundation supplied was these individual watercolor trays. Each student would have their own housing, their own case for their watercolor trays. And the Education Foundation money purchased these inserts, refills-type watercolors, and I would pop them in their trays, so every student had their own set of paintbrushes to use for their class.
Welcome to Amherst County Public Schools. My name is Dr. Brown and I'm the proud principal of Amherst County High School. I guess you're wondering, "Why should you come work for Amherst County Public Schools?" But, the question really should be, "How can you not work for Amherst County Public Schools?" This is an amazing place to work with amazing people and with the mission of every child, every day. If you love kids, this is the place for you. Amherst County is a beautiful place to live. We have scenic mountains. We're situated really nicely between Lynchburg, which is a small urban city, and Charlottesville, which has a lot of amenities. They have concerts, venues, and there's a lot of recreational things that you can do. The town is just amazing place for it to be. It's got that old-town feel. It just really makes you feel like you're back in like a really close-knit small town. But the county as a whole, these are just great people around here that love Amherst County and they love Amherst County Public Schools. Education is really, really important to our community and we do the absolute best here to provide the top-notch education that our kids need and deserve. We are all about promoting life-ready students. And so, for Amherst County Public Schools, it's not just about teaching to the test and passing SOLs and accreditation. We earnestly want to build our students to be thriving, engaged citizens and focusing on character and communication and critical thinking and creative thinking and citizenship. We are doing things that are going above and beyond to promote those within our students. Even with the pandemic and the COVID-19 situation, we've looked for opportunities amongst all the obstacles. And we want to try to promote an educational system that is allowing our kids to experience the things that a normal school system would, even amongst these difficult times. When the pandemic hit, one of the first things that we did was to continue education. And so, we partnered with our local news station, WSET, to create these amazing, engaging lessons. Teachers sprung to action all across the county to create these awesome and engaging lessons. Our teachers have really done an amazing job of collaborating this year. We've had more collaboration than ever, so if you're coming onto our team, you can be sure that you're going to have awesome educators that have an amazing experience that are going to be able to walk alongside you and really help navigate this new educational situation that we are in. But, at the end of the day, what makes Amherst County really special is our kids. These are some of the best, talented, amazing kids that you're going to find. Here at Amherst County High School, Amherst Middle School, Manellis and Middle School, all of our elementary schools, our kids are constantly winning awards. They're constantly going above and beyond. They're inquisitive, they are talented, they're gifted, and they really care about each other. So, it's beyond just studying and learning the facts. Our kids are doing amazing things to make our community better. And I think that's one of the most powerful things that I can say about our kids. They're not waiting to be the future. They are the future right now. And they're having an impact in our community and they want to serve and they want to do things to make our world and our community better. As a new teacher coming into our division, we're going to provide the support that you need and we have an amazing research-based mentoring program. We have seasoned, experienced teachers that are our mentor teachers and they're going to come alongside and help you with lesson planning and help you create engaging lessons and help you think outside the box and really push you to be the best version of yourself as an educator here in the school system. I think one of the things that really drew me to the county is our desire to be innovative. And we have started an innovation cohort and we are really taking the walls down on education and telling our teachers to just go for it. Think about things that are going to be engaging for your kids. Think about jobs that haven't been created. How are you going to be able to promote students the skills that they need, not just the soft skills, but the essential skills that they need to be successful in the workforce. Now, here at Amherst County High School, we have an amazing CTE, Career and Technical Education Program, that is really preparing our students to be work-ready on day one. And so, these are things that we have available for our students and these are the type of people that we're looking to have come here and work for Amherst County Public Schools. Again, you might ask yourself, "Why should you work for Amherst County Public Schools? Why would you want to?" And I would again say, "How can you not?" After hearing everything about our kids, our beautiful county that we have here, amazing staff and peers, this is the place to work. If you want to be innovative, if you want to teach more than to the test, and if you want to prepare students to be life-ready, Amherst County Public Schools is the place for you. I hope that you apply and I hope that I see you around. And as I always like to say, "And go Lancers!"
Welcome to Amherst County Public Schools where our mission statement is "Every Child, Every Day." If we look back to March 13th this past year, 2020, when the governor decided it was best for the school systems in the state of Virginia to shut down, most of the state was caught completely off-guard. I can proudly say that within one week, Amherst County Public Schools had a Chromebook in every single child's hand. Within another week, we were offering at-home learning opportunities and we closed out the last eight weeks of the school year with different material for every subject, including elective classes such as course, band, PE, and all the core classes, social studies classes, science classes, English classes, math classes, having material for the students to learn at home from their Chromebooks. In addition, for students that did not have Wi-Fi at home, we offered handouts at the school of flash drives so the students could still continue to participate. That's the mentality of Amherst County Public Schools. We made sure that every child, every day, was taken care of and that's how we approach every situation that we have. We live in an area that is close to not a big city, but Lynchburg has pretty much everything you would want. But it doesn't cost nearly as much as a big area might be. Now, if you're watching this part of the video, then it's a good chance that you're considering secondary, and not just secondary, but middle school. It takes a special breed to want to educate middle school students because they are a different breed on their own. I truly believe that when a student is in grades 6 through 8, that is the easiest time in their life that you can mold them. That's the easiest time in their life you can make a huge impression on them. As Maya Angelou said, "They're not going to remember what you taught them, but they'll remember how you make them feel." And I can promise you, that means more in the middle school setting than any other time in their educational careers. You ought to really consider coming to Amherst County and being part of our team. We've got a really good thing going here where we truly believe in "Every Child, Every Day." Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Ferguson and I'm currently the Assistant Principal at Central Elementary School in Amherst County, Virginia. Thank you for your interest in our school system. Personally speaking, I can say that this is probably the best system to work in. Having transferred to Amherst County Schools last year, I have held nothing but support or felt nothing but support from our central office staff. When you enter any school within our county, you will immediately feel a sense of belonging. We take pride in developing positive relationships, not only with our staff, but our families and students as well. And let's not forget the beautiful views you will encounter once you enter Amherst County. Whether you're teaching elementary or secondary level, you will be supported. Starting with our school board members, central office staff, building-level administrators, and the fellow teachers you will work with within your unit, we are all here to help and support you. Amherst County Public Schools Administration encourages an open-door policy, so don't ever feel as if you cannot ask a question to anyone at any level. Again, we are here to help you. Amherst County Public Schools Administration is committed to supporting our faculty, staff, and students. We want to provide the best education possible for all our students meeting each student's need. Our school motto is "Every Child, Every Day." Children are our focus. Making sure they have a strong foundation and their educational support starting at pre-K levels is something that we strive to do. All students experience a higher level of positive educational outcomes within our school division. The diversity of our staff within our buildings reflects the diversity of the population of students that we service. We have students that come from different backgrounds and ethnic groups, which each adds to our uniqueness. To help foster this diversity, each school presented diversity lessons to our students to help understand the uniqueness of everyone involved. Here at Central, our expectations are to be safe, be responsible, and to be considerate. As a new hire, you will be able to participate in a new teacher mentorship program. Each new teacher will be paired with a mentor within the school division to help support you throughout your first two years of teaching. You will also have the support of the division's staff members. The purpose of the mentorship program is to provide you with current best practices to implement into your classroom to help support you with classroom management, curriculum, and instruction. Amherst County Public Schools also has wonderful support from our community. Each year, the Amherst Education Foundation awards grants to teachers to utilize these funds to help enhance student learning opportunities within their classrooms. Each grade is up to $1,000 and you can apply for them twice a year. This year has been unique in itself. We've been faced with the pandemic. But in order to support the needs of the students, our school division was operating during this pandemic successfully. In order to meet the needs of our students and staff and to follow safety protocols that were put into place, we have implemented daily health screening, wearing of masks, and maintaining a six-foot distance in the classrooms, buses, as well as in our hallways. In addition, the county provided families of our students with recorded lessons that were aired on our local television program station, WSET, to help reinforce skills that they will learn in school. We know that social-emotional learning is very important, so that was prioritized this year in which every school did a morning meeting to help address any concerns that students may have had. We have live streaming for athletic events this year. This year is something special for the class of 2020. We could not have a unique graduation program, so we had a drive-through graduation at Amherst County High School, which was awesome. I must say that was the only one that was presented that way in our division or in our area that we live in. Students did receive meal distribution throughout the summers and mobile hotspots were added to our buses and trailers so students and teachers could access the internet for their learning needs. Again, I can say Amherst County is the best school division to work at. As I stated earlier, you will feel part of this division no matter what school you walk into. There is a positive atmosphere in every building. You will have support not only from your fellow teachers within your unit, but at the building-level administration and your central office administration as well. You will see your students' show grow throughout the school year. Resources will be provided to make sure you have a successful first year in Amherst County Schools. Remember, working here, working together, we can make a difference in each student's life. Teamwork is our motto. We're all in this together for the benefit of our students. Hello, my name is Melissa Ferguson and I'm currently the-
Do we have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Make a motion, we come out of closed session.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's see. Help me out, yeah. Read stuff right here. Y'all stay with me. Whereas the Amherst County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Amherst County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from public, from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Motion to certify.
I make a motion to certify?
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, you good? All right. At this time, we are going to 3.01. First of all, let me welcome everyone this afternoon to the school board meeting for June, and we apologize for the lateness, but we're going to move right along. I want to say that we are excited, because this is the last day of school, and we did make it. We'll make some comments on that later, but at this time, we do have, going into public comment, 3.01, and we do have several names here. We shall read your name, and we will ask that you will come forward, give your name and address, and then feel free to make your public comment. Ola McLennan from Madison Heights.
I am Ola McLennan from Madison Heights. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again. When I first transitioned five years ago, I was left at many times, and now I'm being shunned by some of your employees. They turned the other way when I walked past. They will not respond if I speak to them. If I'm standing near a door to a room, they leave the room by another door. They have a right to their beliefs, but I think their behavior is childish, and I consider their behavior a form of harassment. But the generic nondiscrimination, anti-harassment policy that's on your agenda tonight does not define harassment, other than sexual harassment. If I consider an act to be harassment, do you? If I consider an action to be a form of discrimination, do you? The generic policy speaks of equal educational opportunities, but what does this mean? If a transgender student is given a separate educational activity because someone is uncomfortable with the presence of that student, we know that separate is inherently unequal. Wouldn't this leave the school board open to complaint or even a lawsuit? And the biggest question of all is where does this board and this administration stand on passing policy at least as comprehensive as the VDOE's model policy for transgender students? Anyone who has read both the generic policy and the model policy, and I have, can easily see that the generic policy is not nearly at the comprehensive level it must be to meet the requirements of state law. Are we to understand that this board believes that passing the generic policy in this form will meet the state's requirements? Where is a policy that will meet the VDOE's minimal requirements? It's certainly not in the board's agenda today. A few days ago, I spoke to a member of the Lynchburg City School staff. She stated that they are preparing for implementation of the model policy, and what are we doing? I ask you, what are we doing? Are we delaying? Are we doing half-measures? Over the months I've been speaking to you, my overall theme has been the dignity and the respect that transgender persons deserve and can expect from all of us. Each person in this room and each person outside of this room, because we are living and breathing, has a right to expect dignity and respect from those around them, while we even believe that those who have died continue to deserve dignity and respect. And yet, some believe that transgender adults and transgender children don't deserve the dignity and respect that others receive. So far, eight states this year have passed legislation banning transgender girls and women from competing in sports and public schools and colleges. Where is the respect? Where is the dignity? What is the alternative for these students? A complaint based on our generic policies on harassment and discrimination requires date, witnesses, and patterns of behavior, and harassment based on sexual identity is not even defined in the policy. For the person's shunning me, it would have been more productive for me to love them, forgive them, and ask God to change their hearts, and I've already done that. But the harassment, the shunning continues. I guess some miracles take longer than others. A transgender student will expect, will expect respect and dignity. They will expect our support when respect and dignity are lost, and they will expect our leadership to restore respect and dignity deserved by each person in this room and each person outside of this room. Expecting help from the school system when you are being mistreated or disrespected is not part of some effort to disrupt the schools. It's exactly what you or I would do if we were being mistreated. If, after these months of speaking to you, some members of the board feel that efforts to protect transgender students is intended to disrupt the schools, then I haven't been as clear as I could be, or perhaps you still lack understanding, or perhaps we will have to disagree. The VDOE model policy for transgender students describes necessary steps and policies to protect our students from harassment and discrimination, and what to do if it occurs. It describes to us how to maintain the dignity of these students, and how protecting dignity does not include separate, inherently unequal activities. It describes how to protect them- It describes how to protect them from suffering mistreatment like the shunning and laughter I have received, whether it be from students, or even worse, from adults who should know better. A community serves its members by protecting the dignity of each person, and right here inside of this room and outside of this room, we have a community. And dignity and respect are always popular, are always trending, and are always the right thing to do. And if this doesn't go the way I think it should go, I'll still love you, though almost as much, but I reserve the right to keep trying. Thank you so much.
Ms. Bev Jones?
Madam Chair, School Board Members, good evening.
Evening.
At the last joint board meeting with the school board and the board of supervisors, a statement was made that caught my attention that I think needs some clarification. It was stated that the VTSS, Virginia Tiered System of Support, addresses discipline. That is not true. The VTSS does not address discipline at all. It covers academics, equity, behavior, social-emotional learning, and family engagement. Now, the Office of Civil Rights only dealt with the inequities and black discipline issues. For example, black students were referred to the office more frequently and were disciplined more harshly, such as longer suspensions and more frequent suspensions. The Diversity Council analyzed that data in several other areas: lack of diversity among staff, lack of diversity in advanced courses and programs in the CTE. Some examples: in 2020, the STEM Academy had one black student and 14 white students. Early College had 11 black students and 38 white students. Dual Enrollment had 15 black students and 137 white students. Governor's School had one black student and 14 white students. Gifted had 16 blacks and 197 whites. AP courses, five blacks, 99 whites. Algebra I in our middle schools had 14 blacks and 98 whites. In 2019, the CTA program had 16 blacks and 17, excuse me, 16 blacks and 79 whites. In 2019, there were 16 black teachers. We had 319 whites teachers, compared to 100, one, excuse me, 1,354 minority students, such as black, Native American, Asian, Hispanic, Hawaiian, and multiple race students. These numbers represent 2017 to 2018. In 2020-21 school year, three blacks were hired and 25 whites. Today, 8.2% of our teachers are black and 89 are white. 16 of our administrators are black and 75% are white. The first stop on your comprehension plan called the roadmap, excuse me, the roadmap to serve every child every day begins with equity. That is why the equity plan that you approve focuses on these things too, because the data shows that there was a need, especially cultural compensing training. As a school board, I urge you, I urge you, to put away your personal agendas, conspiracy theories, and misinformation, and work for every child every day. Thank you.
Melissa Larkin?
Hi, my name's Melissa Larkin. I live at 131 Howard Drive. My son is a student at Manellos Middle School. He just finished seventh grade today. He'll be starting eighth grade next year. I'm not here for any of the issues. I'm just here to say thank you. I wanted to publicly acknowledge the teachers that he had this year. He had Mr. Dodgen for Advisory and Health and Phys Ed. He had Ms. Burke, Ms. Camden, Ms. Hill, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Jacobs, Ms. Wright, and also Ms. Goins in Guidance. These teachers this year never, I'm sorry, they did not miss an email or phone call. Most days, if I sent an email, it was less than an hour that I got an email back or a phone call. I know we've heard a lot of complaints, and I'm sure some parents were not as lucky as me, but maybe I just lucked out. Ms. Goins in Guidance took multiple phone calls from me this summer, and without her, Jace would have been enrolled at LCA. She assured me that even though with the hybrid schedule, he would still get a proper education. I was very scared going into this year. Honestly, I didn't think we were going to make it past a month and that we were all going to be virtual, so I thank everyone for all their hard work. I just, I was at home getting ready to cook dinner, and I remembered that the school board meeting was tonight. I don't have anything written. I don't, my only issue that I would speak about is the eight-to-three or nine-to-four schedule. As I said, Jace is just going into eighth grade, but looking ahead, I do think that the eight-to-three schedule for secondary works out better for after-school sports and also when they're old enough to get a job. But once again, just thank you to everyone, and I'm glad we made it through the school year, and you all appreciate it, but especially our teachers. No offense to y'all, but thank, I just want to thank them so much for being there and for allowing him to go to school and get an education this year. Y'all have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
I'm going home to cook him dinner.
Thank you. Dawn Justice?
Dear Superintendent Arnold and School Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the subject of protecting our children and supporting our teachers as well. Last Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, Lynchburg City School Board passed the removing, yes, you heard me correctly, removing of sex offenders and crimes against minors registry information policy. They also removed the violent sex- They also removed the Violent Sex Offender on School Property Policy. Tonight, you School Board members have the same policies before you to be voted on to be removed. Policy KN about Sex Offenders and Crimes Against Minors Registry Information and Policy. I'm looking at a copy of it here, and most of it is cut out. It concerns me greatly. I please reject this irresponsible policy as it removes the restrictions and prohibitions of Tier 1, Tier 2 sex offenders, registered sex offenders on school property and at school events. It also removes the policy that requires notification by, by law enforcement to let you know who is on the school property that could be a threat. For instance, if you look at... I think it's page 3, where it says Sex Offender and Crimes Against Minor Registry. Notification has been crossed out, information. It goes down, and it is crossed out, it, of annual notification, it's crossed out, "At the beginning of each school year, the blank school division shall notify parents and employees of this policy." The School Board will also annually notify the superintendent. It's changed that to "The superintendent notifies the parent of each student enrolled in the school division" of the availability of information in the registry. Crossed out Sex Offender and Crimes Against Minors Registry and the location of the website. It has crossed out entirely the section of Dissemination of Sex Offender Registry Information that describes the protocol for how this information should be shared. It used to be the Sex Offender Registry Information should be provided to employees who are most likely to observe unauthorized persons on or near school property, including but not limited to school bus drivers, employees responsible for visitor registration, employees responsible for bus duties, security staff, coaches, playground supervisors, and maintenance personnel. That's been crossed out. It's no longer required if you pass removing this policy. Before, it said when registry information was disseminated, it should include a notice that such information should not be shared with others and may only be used for the purposes discussed below. That's a good policy. It shouldn't be shared with anyone other than the people supervising the children. They crossed out use of Sex Offender Registry Information. Um, they had a protocol for what a notified employee could do if they saw a registered sex offender on or near the school property. That's crossed out. The school volunteers and student teachers, each staff member shall submit to the principal the name and address of each volunteer the staff member proposes to use as soon as the person is identified. That's completely crossed out. Contractors, employees, and addition to ensuring that the certification requirements of policy DJF purchasing procedures are met, the superintendent shall include the following language in all division contracts that may involve an employee of the contractor having any contact with a student. The contractor shall not send any employee or agent who is a registered sex offender to any school building or school property. Monthly contractors shall check the registry to determine if any of their employees are registered. That's gone. School division employees, that's marked up. It's all gone. This concerns me greatly, greatly. It removes the, the procedure for employees and parents to be aware of those who have proven themselves to be a threat to the children. So I urge you, please, stand up in defense of the children and the teachers, because the people who are most vulnerable are the children and women and at-risk and marginalized youth. So thank you very much. Oh, my address, right? Sorry. Um, 125 Garland Avenue, Amherst, Virginia. And thank you so much for your hard work.
Susan Morris?
Um, Susan Morris, 853 Dixie Airport Road, Madison Heights. Um, I just want to reiterate what we just heard in regards to the sex offender concern. You know, my granddaughter goes to school, and I want to make sure that she's protected. I want to make sure that we've done everything we possibly can to prevent anything from happening to the children. And so I just really want to support what was said regarding that and to please, 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 let's just protect our children. That's the most important thing. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment at this time?
Hello, everybody. My name is Manuel Awanda. I live at 344 Union Hill Road, right here in Amherst. I have a slight complaint going on in, in the county of Amherst as far as the educational process.
Speaking to the mic, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm going to get straight to the point. For some reason, I have, what, we have 3 minutes, 5 minutes?
Well, we'll see.
Okay, great. First of all, I got one of the smartest little girls that I know, and her name is Amina Awanda. When she was in the 3rd grade, her teacher, when she was trying to teach about Abraham Lincoln and slavery, what she did was actually separate the kids. It was 19 kids in the classroom, and it was five Black kids and the rest of them are all white. Now, out of the five Black kids, three of them were mixed. Now, when she's teaching about Abraham Lincoln and slavery, what she actually did was she made the Black kids serve the white kids. By saying that, she made them take water and book bags. Imagine you're in the classroom, there's a section of white kids on the side and a section of Black kids on the side. Now, the Black kids had to serve the white kids. Now, if you're trying to teach about Abraham Lincoln and slavery, actually biasing the kids, that's very unfair. Now, me, for example, when I hear certain things like that, you know, as a parent, it gets me angry. Now, what they were trying to do was when they got home that day, "No, don't tell daddy, don't tell daddy." Unfortunately, they know that daddy has, you know, heuristic characteristics. So when she told her mom, her mom was like, "No, don't tell daddy, don't tell daddy." But I have to ask these questions. Eventually, it came back to that, so I had to voice my opinion to the school. And now, the, it was addressed. The situation was addressed. She was in the 3rd grade when this happened. She's a, like I said, she's a very smart little girl. Moving on to the 4th grade, she was the only girl, the only girl that had honor rolls all throughout the 4th grade. Now, kids, when you're calling an award, they have these award assemblies. You know, the kids, they have charms, they give them charms, they call it certain names. They give them, hey, you know, good citizenship, hey, uh, perfect attendance. Now, my little girl, you know, kids, they love these award assemblies because it motivates them. So she was the only little girl when they were calling different names for good citizenship, perfect attendance, and every time they're calling other kids' names, and she's like, "Hey daddy, what's going on? Daddy, what's going on? What the hell are they going to call your name?" So when they finally call her name, the only award that she got was the award for the only little girl that had honor rolls all throughout the year. Now, meanwhile, I was sitting there with the wife, and, you know, the wife also, she's something else. She gets angered. I mean, that was very unfair. No, we are here to motivate these kids. When you're talking about award assemblies, the little kids, they're getting motivated, "Hey, this award, this award." But you're giving other kids other awards, but you're not giving my little girl no award at all. But the only award that you can't take from her is the honor roll, and that's the only one that you call her for? Come on now, that's insane. 6th grade. Now, remember, the manager went from 3rd grade to 4th grade and 6th grade. Now, 6th grade, like I said, she's a, you know, she gives, she's one of those little girls. I'm pretty sure everybody thinks that their kids always give 150%. Mine, she gives 150% and more. I mean, she's something else. I, I love that little girl. But she wanted to play sports, wanted to play basketball. I said, "Child, you know, you're in the 6th grade now. You can't play basketball. We got to wait till you get to the 7th grade over in Amherst Middle School." We started off in Central. Anyways, she made the basketball team. Like I said, she gives everything and everything. So the coach, the coach would tell her, "I'm going to put you in the game. I'm going to put you in the game." And I mean, like I said, she gives everything. So come during the game time, the coach waits. Now, it was two Black kids, my, two Black kids. The coach waits till it's like a minute or two before the game is over, and then decides to put my little girl in the game. That happened the first time. I said, "Okay, well, I'm just going to let it slide. I'm not going for it." Second time, same thing. Third time, I had to go talk to the coach.
You got 5 minutes.
Okay, I got 5 minutes?
No, you got 2 minutes.
Okay, I got 2. I was hoping I had more time, but it wasted.
Write us, write us.
I can.
But finish your sentence.
Leave me, I will.
Finish your sentence so we don't get him that upset.
Okay. Now, coach, same thing. Oh, cool coach, whatever his name was. Uh, "I'm going to put you in, I'm going to put you in." Guess what? Game time for my little girl to play. I mean, when kids play these basketball games, it's not a major, I know it's a tournament, but it's kind of recreation, recreational for them, you know? It's very good for, you know, you make sure every little kid, when they come, because they're going to practice every day. You practice for a reason, to at least be part of the game. So when you're in the, when the other kids are playing, and then you're sitting down, but, "Daddy, I'll give it all. I'll give it all, but they're not letting me play the game." That hurts my little girl. And guess what? When my little girl hurts, I hurt even more. So now, you know, it's getting to the point where, "Hey, coach, what's going on? I mean, give every little kid a chance to play. Give her a little chance." Now, it was two Black girls off planes, but one of the Black girls, she decided to quit because she wanted to, she wanted to play and have no game time anyways. So, and every time, every time she gets put in the game, either her defense is extra strong or she gets fouled, she's one of those kids where she always makes it. Free throw, she makes the free throws. So she was well above, her skill is way above, you know, from her status already. Anyways, cut a long story short, you know, she was being biased for whatever reason. But I told my little girl, "Don't worry about it." Now, we went from, if anybody was paying attention, we went from 3rd grade, the 4th grade, and the 6th grade. By the way, she's the only child in Amherst County that has skipped 5th grade. The only child. And for her to skip the 5th grade, she had to take certain tests, certain SOLs, and she paced it. Now, all throughout her school scholastic years, she's always had A++, always been in advanced classes. Now, when she skipped the 5th grade, they sent her to 6th grade thinking that she was, she wasn't going to do well at all. So they tried to downplay her academic level. But certain classes, they still gave her advanced classes. And guess what? All advanced classes, math, English, history, still A++. So that goes, that goes to tell you this little girl has a hard, I mean, she has a hard to go. All throughout school system, you know, whenever she finishes her work, guess what? She's almost like a teacher's aide. She helps the teacher trying to make the other kids understand what they can't understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I had to say. Just had to express my opinion. Thank you very much.
Write us.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. Uh, thanks for the opportunity one more time to, uh, kind of, uh, expand on, uh, the joint meeting. My name is Gloria Witt, President, NAACP, 123 Aaron Drive, Madison Heights, Virginia. Um, I guess I'm here tonight, uh, in terms of how I'm feeling. I would, I would corner it as frustrated. Um, I feel like, uh, the citizens, the board in particular, citizens that they rounded up to speak, uh, we're tossing coins or balls over the fence, and nowhere are we connecting in the middle. And somewhere in all of this conversation, there's got to be a connection, because I think all of us want to see a positive result. And, um, so I'm here to try to get that connection, because connections matter to me. It matters to NAACP, because we can't do things individually. We can't do things isolated. And so my thought is, based on the discourse from our last meeting, uh, there was a comment made about, is it really necessary to do anything when it comes to equity lessons, social justice issues, et cetera? And I am feeling very scared that this board will press the pause button. And if you do decide to press the pause button, and I surely hope you don't, uh, I want to represent the thoughts from NAACP. We've come too far. Uh, you've heard it all. You've sit through it. I am tired. It started in December. This is June, and we're still talking. Luckily, citizens and I are here in, in mass force, but we've come too far to go backwards. It's 2015 all this started, and we need to be on the right side of history. We cannot drop this ball. We cannot fumble. This is your leadership moment. Equity, it is on your roadmap. How ironic it was for me to walk in this building, and there's a cute little journey map, and right at the top was equity. And we have made a mess of it in Amherst County because we are uncomfortable, afraid, some, once somebody's child is going to get, uh, unfairly treated. And so tonight, we brought some evidence with us. Ms. Jones showed you the numbers. I don't know if you read the Equity Plan, but we have, and those are the numbers. That tells me, based on fact, we got a problem with equity. You can't hide from it. The numbers speaks for themselves. Pull out the plan and read it. It also tells us that this is systemic. We have Mr. Awanda come in and, and show the journey of a life of a particular Black or Brown child. And if you got one, you better believe it's a whole lot in the closet that don't make it to the public. So that's another indicator that we got evidence, that we got issues with equity and equality and fairness and justice in our education system. So let's get focused here. Let's get focused here. This whole debate is really evolving around equity lessons. In whatever form, guess who? The Diversity Council, through the guidance of Dr. Rob Arnold, recommends to this board to keep us pressing forward. And to pause would say, people like Ona, who's pressing her point on the issues related to transgender and marginalized groups, gets shunned and stuff to the side. So, okay, let's, let's go, let's reverse this. We got issues with staff leaning into equity. We got issues with employees leaning in with equity. We got issues with children treating each other fairly, and we are afraid to educate? And this is an educational forum? Think about it. If we don't teach them here, oh, I forgot, it's a family matter. Good luck with that. When all else fails, it never hurts to get some learning multiple times. Somebody told me, seven times you get it, and it becomes ingrained. So mom and daddy give it to you, the school give it to you, your mentor give it to you. Somewhere or another, we rise together in an inclusive community. And again, I'm mighty afraid the board is going to be on the wrong side of history. And I specifically call out the board because, um, I see you struggling against Dr. Arnold, the teachers, and the staff. And to me, your role as a board is to support and remove barriers and allow them to do the work they were paid and hired to do. And so my, uh, my request and our expectation, the young folks in the group say, "Demand it, demand it." No, that's too rough. I'm, I'm much too old for all that. But the expectation is, you would do the right thing. You will lean on the right side of history, and you will support Dr. Arnold, the staff, the teachers, and our students, we need it. Support the Diversity Council, which created this conversation. How in the world we got into politics and critical race theory and indoctrinating children? Crazy. The focus is equity lessons. And will you vote to continue lessons for 2021, 2022? Because I got a feeling, you're feeling mighty uncomfortable, and you want to take the easy way out. This is not the time or the moment to go backwards and take the easy way out just because you happen to be in a position of power. So, come, please, continue to support the Diversity Council. The Equity Plan is your evidence that we're making progress in our community. The numbers you heard. We need progress. And we only get that through development and growth, not only for our children, our staff, our teachers, but for us as community leaders. Maybe we need to sign up for the class. Think about it. And finally, uh, I've already said, we got to support Dr. Arnold and the administration. We hired him to focus on the equity. We have a strategy. Why are you putting water on something that's going well? Yes, change is hard. Yes, change is hard. No one said it was easy, but we cannot go backwards. We didn't get here today going backwards. You press through the storm and you get to the sunshine. And finally, you're here as a school board to support the administration. To me, if the Virginia Department, and, and I would say, this is a personal opinion, if, if the Virginia Department of Education casts down laws and decisions at a local level, when I listened to your legal counsel, I heard something like, you have a responsibility as a school board to implement those policies out of Richmond at a minimum, at, at the level that they cascade them down, or go further. So to water down a policy questions your commitment to the public education system of the state of Virginia. And I question, should you be on our board, or do you need to run for office and get down to Richmond? Because once it gets to Little Lammer's County, implement. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? If not, I was given a letter to read, a, a email came to me this afternoon, and so we will, uh, do as the citizens ask us to do. It says, mess with this thing right here. It says, "I have taught pre-K at Central Elementary for three years prior to this school year and was reassigned to teach art this year. Originally, I had a five-page letter that I had hoped to read, but knowing I wouldn't be permitted the time, this is the condensed version. First, I would like to apologize to the parents and students of Amherst County. You and your children deserve so much more than what has been received this school year. Despite the tireless and overwhelming responsibilities and work of the teachers, the county and building leaders seriously let the ball drop this year, and for that, I am deeply sorry. The policy and mitigation strategies for COVID have been poorly abided by within our buildings across the county. It has simply not been followed or enforced with consistency across the county, and I'm not referring to building-specific situations. I know this due to conversations with teachers in other buildings and having been in other buildings this year. The absence of policy and strategy of enforcement has caused dangerous and unsafe conditions, as well as behaviorally chaotic teaching and learning environments for our teachers and students. You can take another look at the document that event identifies the policy and strategies, as I have concluded it with my very long letter. This year, teachers have been bombarded with toxic positivity from all our leaders. Let's take a look at what toxic positivity is. The belief that no matter how dire or difficult the situation is, people should and are expected to maintain a positive mindset, rejecting difficult emotions in favor of a cheerful and often false positive vacate. This also includes accountless thumbs up and comments of, we got this and nice job. Not to mention all the times that we were reminded to self-care when we are obviously barely surviving. Rather, how about not asking me to email homeroom teachers while I am absent and making life-death decisions for a very ill family member? How about leaving our fall-breaking weekends alone instead of springing extra responsibilities on us at the last minute? Personally, I have targeted, personally, I have felt targeted and attacked by specific people this school year, including superiors called a liar in so many words, and have been lied to by the administration, have had my concerns ignored, and have witnessed firsthand the favoritism and tattletale culture that is encouraged and even participated in by building administration. Additionally, I was warned of speaking at the meeting tonight, specifically that I need to be careful with what I say if I plan to secure a position in Amherst County Public Schools in the future. I wanted to speak on the equity culturally sensitive and CRT issue. Every school I've ever worked in teaches talk with high levels of equity. Equity means approaching students based on their individual needs, meeting them where they are developmentally, and setting goals based on self-growth and developmentally appropriate regardless of their cultural background, race, or sex. The problem is that the fact that the equity curriculum being sent down from DVOE and across the country is not simply about equity. The details that people are specifically upset over are arguing about the critical race theory components that are making its way into the curriculum. I can tell you as a human being and teacher that I will never make any student feel superior or inferior for any reason opposition to any other human being. Teaching the facts of the past is one thing and important, but if we want to make real change for better, our students need to be taught that they are important no matter what, that if they work hard to achieve their goals, they can succeed. I will not participate in building a new era culture of oppressors and oppressed. CRT has no place in our school system. Finally, I would like to weigh in on the gender expansive or transgender policy that has been on the discussion board for a while. As educational professionals, we are mandated by law to report neglect and abuse of mental, emotional, sexual, and physical nature to the proper authorities. With our collective education and knowledge of child development, we know, all know that children or adolescents under a certain age, with or without a certain amount of life experience, is not cognitively mature enough to fully understand the depth of a decision such as deciding if they will identify as a boy or girl, or would transition from one to the other. Most recent studies indicate that cognitive development may not be complete until the individual has reached their mid twenties. This is why we have laws that state children cannot change their names until they have reached legal adulthood, eighteen years old. People cannot legally buy or consume alcoholic beverages until they have reached the age of twenty-one. Teaching tolerance in schools is one thing, and I'm all for that, but at this point where biologically male students identify as females and vice versa, and parents encourage this to the point of requesting name changes, medications, and surgeries to make their identification seem more physically valid, is become abuse. While I have made the personal decision to resign from my position and take the next year off, I have no intention of fading from the educational setting. As a teacher, regardless of if I am in the classroom or not, I will always be a teacher, and I will always be persistent advocate for children, because children and their future are, always will be my calling and passion. Thank you, Misty Santini. The second letter and final letter that I've received. Put my glasses on here, give me a second. Trying to think where my water went, but anyway. Uh, in light of the comments aired at the June first joint meeting, it is important for the school board and Amherst County Public School administrators to directly address in plain English how the views, how they view the current policies in place regarding the inclusion of critical race theory as a foundation to the teaching methods and curriculum in our schools. Please note that there's no need to repeat the thrice-made deceptive claim that you don't teach critical race theory. The taxpayers of Amherst County have the right to know. Are you going to stop this divisive indoctrination now and return to excellence in traditional learning? Or are you going to double down on CRT and go full speed ahead? It is not an acceptable answer to claim that the Office of Civil Rights or the Virginia Department of Education has tied your hands. This excuse was addressed on June, on June one, and is false. If the answer is two, then will the school board and administration fully own this program with its attendant consequences? By that, I mean, who would pay the legal expenses, the civil judgments, and the fines that could very foreseeably result from the violation of the federal and state law and the U.S. Constitution, we may have already occurred and surely will occur? Legal actions are already underway in other school districts where CRT curriculum content has finally come to light. The county administrator on June had first brought to your attention the legal jeopardy you may be inviting upon yourself. If all of you wish to continue guiding the education of Amherst County youth, I believe you should back up your policy and actions by personally and individually and severally in de, in defying the taxpayers of Amherst County for any legal and financial fallout with a written agreement, putting your own treasure at risk. All the virtual signaling and incom- hump, incom- hump, incom- okay, incom- something. Gobble, gook, or by moving forward are meaningless if you have no skin in the game. I say, clean up your own mess. Focusing for a moment on the equity lessons and all is ilk. If Dr. Arnold and Dr. Brown and the school board have any love or regard for black children, they will not teach this to them. Reserve racism, emphatically called anti-racism, reverse discrimination, and the teaching of revisionist history cannot undo historical realities of prior racism and discrimination. In fact, they interrupt a fifty-year-plus period of progress and healing, which was the legacy of American civil rights struggle. They also violate the law, persuading children of certain ethnic descent to wear the mantle of victimhood does them no favors. It only sets them out for a big fall. Children of other ethnicities, of other ethnicities who are being shamed as oppressors will likewise have their day of reckoning. Then, when equity exalts itself, for example, when there's no wealth left to confiscate and distribute, or when Marxism philosophies lose their grip on the woke coalition, nearly all of these children would be far worse off than their parents were. How sad it would be for our country to descend into a tribal society of competing have-nots and historically demonstrated fertile ground for new heights of racial animus. Is this the shameful legacy that today's Amherst County educators wish to leave behind? Please, I ask you to consider my comments, answer my questions, and do the right thing for the children of Amherst County. Respectfully, Sidney Storza. At this time, going to four point oh one.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, tonight, uh, we bring to you the second reading of, uh, Amherst County Public School Policies. Before we start with approval, um, I would recommend, uh, that the board make a motion to remove KN, KNA, KK, KP, and DJF to give to our, uh, legal counsel to bring back more information, uh, to this board at a later date.
I make a motion that we pull those policies from, um, this item for legal counsel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir, full vote, sir.
So with the remainder of the policies, um, uh, the, uh, administration, uh, recommends the, uh, approval, and we ask for, uh, your approval tonight.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, board members? Do we have a vote of approval?
Make a motion and approve policy, the remaining policies as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second, I apologize. Who, who's second?
Second.
Mr. Terry? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, opposed.
Okay, let us do it. Mr. Terry?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Grayson?
Aye.
Ms. Berg?
No.
Ms. Wright?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Ligon, yes. What's that counting, tell ya, I kinda lost it.
Four, two, pass.
Okay. Let us move on to...
Yes, uh, four point oh two, consider approval of the 2021, 2022 school year plan. You have on board docs, the feedback and the, the data from the responses. Uh, as you recall, from the, the last meeting, we put out, uh, the plan, and there was consensus as a board that the, the plan was, was in a good place, except for when the school day starts for elementary and secondary. So if you look at the data, uh, what you'll see is that fifty-three percent of the, I believe it was three hundred and eighty-some? Oh, okay, we had twelve hundred that answered the question. Fifty-three percent of those, uh, people wanted secondary to go first and elementary to go at nine o'clock, which would reverse this year, um, and would go back to what it was two years ago. Forty-seven percent, uh, wanted elementary to go first. There, so that is, that's, that's the data. We also have it broken out for you by what parents thought, what students thought, what staff thought. Parents and, uh, students wanted secondary first, and, um, staff had fifty-seven to forty-three wanting elementary first. So I was like, okay, go ahead.
Staff on their own, not staff with, uh, children.
Staff on their own, yes, sir.
Is it, is this, was, this wasn't published, is this, where the public can see this yet, the, the survey results?
No.
At, at some point, I think, I mean, I know, I don't wanna get off topic, but I think that'd be a good idea to let them see the results of this.
So, we...
So I think as a separate thing, that you, you wanna do, you wanna decide when, by vote, when you want school to start for elementary and when school will start for secondary. And once you've done that, then approve the plan as presented.
We have comments from the board. Um, you've heard what the, uh, poll that was sent out, the survey. It looked like it was in favor, I'm gonna just quote this, it was in favor to, uh, return as it was, that secondary would go first. We're not talking about the times, but the secondary would go first.
Yeah, somewhere around eight o'clock.
And that's, uh, the little people I call them would go second. That was what the community and the parents want. Okay. Ms. Terry, do you have, wanna weigh in on that first as we move on?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so, most of the emails that I have gotten have been in support of what the data is showing. I, I know that the, uh, the report Dr. Arnold was looking at said it was best for the older students to go later, um, but like I said, most of everybody who's contacted me has been leaning toward the older students going earlier. Yes, make sure I get that out there right, so.
Okay, Ms. Grayson?
I, I, I concur. I know it was kinda funny, last meeting, we were having that discussion, and basically, we weren't clear on what position, so. I, I like having this data in front of me, it kinda supports what I'd already heard, uh, but we're not, we're, we're not, this isn't gonna include the, are we gonna have any discussion on the block schedule and, or the, any of that piece?
We can, I have data.
Is it, is this all encompassing, if we get to the point? Oh, just the time. Well, as far as the time, I'm glad, um, I'm glad we've got this data to, to help make a decision.
Ms. Wright? I'm sorry, Ms. Berg, I looked the wrong way, excuse me.
Oh, I just finally found the graph that he had pulled up. I'm just gonna look at it quick, but I'm in agreement with, um, our secondary students going later on in the day. I know.
If you say agreement, that's the opposite now, what? Oh, you, you would like what now, I'm sorry?
I, I would like the secondary students to start later, similar to what they did, yes.
All right, and Ms. Wright?
Yeah, now I don't know. Because the data doesn't support what I thought.
Well, we, we're just having a conversation, and we're gonna have to come to some conclusion. Um, we'll come back to you if you like.
Yeah.
Ms. Thompson?
Um, well, I agree, I like the data. Um, I think that's very important to ask. I see that they want secondary students to go earlier, elementary students to go second. I think that's what I would support. I know, uh, sports, jobs in the afternoon, uh, do cause students to get home late, and they have homework to do, especially those that are in sports and doing jobs or high performers, and they have lots of homework, so I think getting home later could be problematic. So, anyway, I'd support the data.
Okay, um, well, we asked for the data.
Yep.
We asked what parents wanted.
Yep.
Uh, and so I'm with the recom, uh, not, I'm all about trying to appease everyone. Somebody not gonna like this, but we're gonna try to go with what the majority said. So in other words, we're going back to what we used to be. Um, high school is for the best word, going first. Is that correct? I mean, that's what we hear.
Yeah, you need to make the motion.
Uh, we go back, Ms. Wright, what do you have? Nothing yet?
Um, no, um, no, I agree that that's what the majority wants, so that's what we should do.
Ms. Berg? You said, you said...
I, I like the older students.
Okay, that's fine.
So, you want a motion just on start time, is that what you're, and then we can discuss the block?
Yeah, then we'll do the rest of it. So do I have a motion to, well, we can vote on it, yes, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I, I move that we, uh, uh, go along with what the majority response on the schedule, which is to allow secondary to start prior to, uh, elementary, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I had to remember what year it was. But, so that, so basically, for summation, is that secondary starts first, elementary starts second.
Yes, sir, do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, we have, uh, probably moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So that, so the next piece, and if you wanna bring out the, uh, the block scheduling, I'll just give you some background. We had comments, we had twenty-three of the three hundred and thirty-eight comments, but twenty-three out of the twelve hundred that responded to the survey had an opinion about block or seven-period day, and those were split in half. Each school did a, each secondary school did a survey within their building, and, uh, we also, this survey went out to staff, and there was not any, any kind of desire, uh, by the majority to move back to a seven-period day. I just want you to have that information before we start talking.
Madam Chair, was that, was that specific question posed though, or was it expected to be placed in the comments?
Well, uh, no, well, not on this. No, well, not on this, but Dr. Brown and the other, and I think Dr. Brown, you sent out a specific survey to your staff, correct? Yes, and what was? Okay. Yeah, I want you to have that specific.
I was just curious if that was specifically asked or not.
Yes, ma'am.
I was under the impression that when we met in May, that we were seeing the initial report and recommendations. And then I know that it was gonna go out for comments and see how the community and the teachers felt about it. So I really had hoped that I would see some data on the A-B block. And so I don't know, I know you said that there was a survey taken at the high school, I don't, I'm assuming there must have been one at the middle school. I do think it's important for teachers to have buy-in in order to make this work. And I know we used to be on a block, and then we went back to seven-period day. And then this year, we did block because of COVID, it was the way that we could help mitigate. So I'm not a hundred percent sure that I understand the logic or the pros to going to this next year and not just go back to what kids are seeing as normal or the seven-period day.
Do you wanna have that conversation?
I mean, we really haven't talked about it, so I don't...
Well, we did last time, and we discussed the pros and cons about the seven-period day, and...
No, and why not seven-period day?
Well, pulling that up, I will say as a student of the block, the difference between this that is more appealing to me would be the fact of it, it continues throughout the year, and it's just not relegated to four classes for one semester, and then you're done with that particular curriculum. This, I, I mean, you're probably gonna touch on this, but from a STEM perspective, when I start getting into science-based that requires labs, I just think of how much more you can accomplish in a larger period. I can remember working on drafting projects that, if I'd been on a forty-five minutes period that I couldn't have even logged into CAD and done much of, without that whole hour and a half time period to actually focus on that curriculum. And, of course, not every child is gonna go to college, but if you, those that are striving for that, this is a schedule that would more transition logically for, to me, for a student that was attending higher learning.
And this also lines up with the innovation that we're trying to do, that they're trying to have more hands-on projects and deeper learning. It gives more time, you know, when you have forty-five minute to fifty-minute classes, it really becomes compressed. And so this allows for those kinds of things to occur, and, you know, it's... It's the eight periods in a year also give students more opportunities. I know y'all went on a tour last year, or the year before, of our CTE programs, and there was a big concern about our students not having enough opportunities to get into those classes. By having more opportunities, that would be, that would help with that as well. So I think that's, you know, from our standpoint, we feel like it meets the needs of trying to to teach the five Cs in a more, in a deeper, more hands-on way, engaging way, quite frankly.
And my perspective is, I've taught both ways, and I actually like the block, some teachers don't. But I just really feel like teacher input's important, and so I wanna make sure that the teachers have been heard, and parents as well. So what data have we gathered?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Berg? I've always wanted to sit in this seat, so thank you for the opportunity. We sent a survey to our staff, we weren't contemplating a seven-period day. And so we were asking our staff whether they wanted to go to the block schedule, a four-by-four semester block schedule or A-B day block schedule, and so that's the data that we had. Our staff was pretty split, about forty-four percent wanted to go to an A-B block day on the survey, and then fifty-five percent wanted to do a four-by-four semester block. They also had a comment section where they could have written in any comments of concerns, ideas, questions that they had. Our staff has been mainly supportive of the block schedule, and I've gotten a lot of really good feedback. I think the teachers really enjoy having the time that is allowed when you go into a block schedule to have more meaningful, deeper conversations with students and be able to dive into the lessons because you have more time. We also had our leadership team go door-to-door with our teachers and ask them what was best and come back with a department consensus. And so while we had, majority of our teachers on the survey said that a four-by-four semester block was their favorite option, when we met with our leadership team, the leadership team overwhelmingly said that the A-B block schedule was the best thing for their departments. There was only two departments that said that the four-by-four semester block would be best. And the rationale is because once people had the opportunity to talk with their leadership team and their department chairs, they realized there were several benefits to going to an A-B day schedule. It's challenging when you have teachers that you share with the middle schools to schedule a semester block. There are opportunities for year-long classes that are harder to do on a semester block. For example, your band students being able to take band all year long, and your art students being able to take art all year long, it's harder to do that in a semester schedule, especially when you share your band teacher with the middle school students. There's also the opportunity for continuing, the continuity of the classes. So for example, if you take, let's say, Spanish one in the fall, you could go in the spring, and then again in the fall, without Spanish two, and then have to take Spanish two in the spring of the following year. So you can have a whole year on a semester schedule without going, but when you have an A-B block schedule, you have that, you have less of that time and less of those opportunities to take place. So, in short, our staff was, at the end of the day, in favor of an A-B block day schedule, and that was at the high school level. I can't speak to the middle schools, but we didn't survey our students on whether they wanted to, I mean, we didn't survey our staff on whether they wanted to go to a seven-period day schedule versus a block, because we have had a lot of success, and the teachers have had good results, being able to spend that extra time with their students. And I think that's gonna be definitely needed, as we have a hundred and fourteen students coming into the high school as tenth graders who have never been in our building, because they were at ARA. So we're gonna need to spend more time with these students and build those relationships that we talk, or talk about being so important.
Do we have any data from middle school?
I don't know.
Ms. Gray?
Ms. Gray is texting me right now. She did take a survey in regards to, with her teachers, her staff, in regards to a block schedule. She did say that she would send the board members information in regards to what that was overwhelmingly. Both of our middle schools have strongly supported a block schedule, A-day, B-day, so it's continuity of services throughout the entire school year, and that testing would be able to, kids would have that continued support of their instructors all the way through. So when they do take those tests at the end of the year, they will have had input from their instructors the entire time. I can reach out to Mr. Holmes to provide that information to you as well.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Mr. Grayson, just one more piece to...
I had a question for you.
Oh, okay. Just one more piece for, when you add the eight, eight-period block, the eight-block class at the high school level, you actually end up picking up four classes throughout the student's high school career. And so that also provides opportunity for credit recovery if students need that, and you have extra opportunities to recover classes if they need that opportunity. It also gives you opportunities for us to build in some really neat incentive programs, not really incentive programs, but opportunities for like apprenticeships and internships at, on the CTE level once they get to be their senior year. So that's something else that we're looking at, if they can have more credits. You have four extra credits that they can work on in their senior year, and it provides more opportunities for students.
And the students on an advanced track with seven-period day, they're pretty much locked into, and they're having to make decisions at the end of high school on, well, I'd really like to take band, but I just can't do it in my schedule, and that's been a problem for years and years and years.
Absolutely, yeah.
I did get a text from Ms. Gray, the principal at Manellison Middle School, who said there were only three teachers out of thirty-three that responded to the survey in regards to that, that did not want to do block. Thirty-three of them supported a block schedule, A-day, B-day.
On the, on the CTE courses at the high school, the different trades, are they currently double-period? Because you can't do, you can't teach welding in forty-five minutes, are they?
It is a variety of schedules that we have for our CTE programs, but you are correct. In Level Ones, Level Twos, Level Threes, they are blocked, double-blocked, and some, and for this upcoming school year, those blocks may meet, even though core classes would do A-day, B-day, some of our CTE courses to get those seat times in would do every day, A and B day to get the time in.
What are the options, I've heard the governor's school argument, I think was in one of those comments, about the, maybe the, there's a lag time, because...
Timing between...
Timing between the, are there any, are any conversations that could be had as far as something to mitigate the, that impact?
A couple of the things that we do each year as we work with Ms. Smith, as well as Mr. Maddox, work in our STEM program with Susan Cash at CBCC, as well as Dr. Smith at Gov School on regarding our buses and the transportation back and forth. And then we try, as Mr. White and Dr. Brown work out the master schedule at the high school, put those courses that we know that kids wanna come back into the building and take later on in the day, so they are, they are there for that time. And then filling in that, that gap that we may have. Some of them do interns with our teachers in the buildings. Some of them wanna use that as a study hall because they play sports in the evening, and that's when they can do their work. So we've kinda worked individually with each one of those students to figure out what it is that they need.
Okay, thank you.
So, on Wednesday, what is, what would a normal Wednesday look like for a child at the high school? I mean, you've got block one and two, like three and four, five, six, seven and eight. What does that look like? I mean, how does that? What is that?
Do you wanna go first, or I? I met with the middle school principals day before yesterday in regards to, well, one of the groups, Manellison. So let me talk specifically about what we're trying to do with our, with our middle school programs. So when you see A-day, we wanted consistency for children because they have had such an inconsistent process over the last sixteen months. So one of the things that we tried to do was make sure that every Monday, every Tuesday, every Thursday, every Friday, they knew what they were doing on those days. But then to make sure that they also were able to see their teachers at least one day every teacher. So on Wednesday, starting out the school year, they would see all eight of their teachers on that Wednesday. So instead of doing a block of ninety minutes, they act, actually, it's called a skinny, where they do a skinny on Wednesdays where they don't see just one group of teachers, they see all of their teachers on that one day. And that gives them some continuity of making sure that everybody's up to speed and on the same page. It also allows us to, the way that they've worked it out, is to continue to share staffing from the high school to the middle school. So it guarantees that if a child may be sick on Monday and also sick on Thursday, that they've seen their teacher on that Wednesday, because you didn't wanna make, you wanted to make sure that they were available to see teachers every single week. It also provides an opportunity for us to provide more resources, resource in CTE and electives at the middle school level. When you run a skinny inside of, it's almost like a school within a school, so you run a skinny inside of a ninety-minute block, I can do a bit more rotation of students through career awareness, career investigations, band, art, computers. We do the, the new equine, I think it's called, for the, at Manellison Middle School that they just established this year, that allows our teachers to see more students in the rotation. So that's what they're trying to work through at the middle school. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Brown to kinda tell you what's gonna happen on Wednesdays at the high school.
Similar, every Wednesday, all the students would go to all eight of their classes. And we thought that was important for our kids to have at least one day every, every week that they see all their teachers, and they will check in if there's any missing work they need to get caught up or get any information, they have that consistency. The alternative would be to do a schedule where, like, every Monday and Wednesday, you have your A-day classes, and every Tuesday and Thursday, you have your B, and then you're rotating every Friday. So one Friday, you have A, and the next Friday, you have B. And we thought that that might create some confusion with students, every Friday, they'll have to remember which, which, you know, class that they're going to, and then you have a lot of time in between that you're missing. So in order to create consistency, that's one of the ideas that we came up with. The rationale behind putting it on a Wednesday is because if you look at the data, every Friday and every Monday are our highest number of absenteeism for our students at the high school level. And so if you have a schedule that's alternative than your normal schedule, it's possible that your students may not show up that day, or, you know, if they, if that trend continues, they've missed all eight classes on a Friday or a Monday, as opposed to missing four of those classes if that trend continues. So that's some of the rationale and the reasons behind why we're looking at that in that manner from the high school level.
I don't, I don't wanna put Mr. Neighbors on the spot, but as far as maybe a special education class, how do they handle the constant change, I guess, for, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Those first three days are all different. How does that work for, let's say, autistic child? I mean, I'm just curious.
Yep, so I actually had the fortune of teaching, I was a special education teacher, obviously, in a block schedule myself. And that is something that has to be thoughtfully constructed for those students, who are really thinking about how we plan, what visuals we provide support for. Ultimately, what we've seen is that the, whether we're talking about a block schedule, whether we're talking about days where we have a delay, or whatever the case might be, it really does come back to the planning that the staff does to work with those individual student needs. I do think there is inherent benefit in the block schedule when we're talking about the length of time that our special educators can work with students, specifically in our resource classes. The amount of work that we're trying to get done often precludes us from working on annual goal-related skills, transition skills, things like that. With a ninety-minute block, we are able to typically do those things. So it's one of those pieces where, of course, and I know that's my world, it's all individual students and meeting those individual needs, but the preparation of staff looks different in that context. And that's work honestly we've had to do this year as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, yes, ma'am?
Just to touch base on the Wednesday. Understand how that would work, and I like that idea of them touching base with all their classes. I guess I'm just sort of concerned on Fridays, if kids are gonna maybe not come to school or get sick on that day, would that be a day that attendant absences would be high and B-block students might be suffering? And I guess what I'm thinking, would it be better to shift the skinnies to Friday? I don't know, I'm sure you've thought it through.
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't suggest doing that, because if you move the skinnies to Friday, then they're missing all eight classes, as opposed to missing four. My plan is to make sure that all of our kids are in school, and that, that school is so awesome next year, they're not gonna wanna miss. But we do know that, if you look at the data, Fridays and Mondays are days that they tend to miss. They like the long weekends, and sometimes that's when absenteeism, absenteeism becomes a problem. So if, it's not just that Friday, you're also looking at Monday. And so that's, you have A on Mondays and B on Fridays. Ideally, you don't want them missing any, but I think it's less disruptive if they're missing a Friday or a Monday, as opposed to missing all eight classes if we move that to a Friday.
I guess I just wanna say, if they do miss on Friday, they're missing almost two periods, because it's a block, right? Whereas if all periods were on Friday, they'd only be missing one block instead of two, right?
That would also be the case on Monday, too.
Yeah, on Mondays, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I, I understand the, the block, um, I think. So, on Monday, A, that's four classes, and then Mon, uh, Tuesday, B is a different four classes. What are the four lines I'm looking at? One, two, three, four?
Times a day?
You mean where it says block one, block two, block three, block four?
Yeah.
That is, um, class one, which may be English, class two is block two, which is, those are the four classes on that day.
I thought it was professors or something.
Yes, ma'am. And then I did just receive a text from Mr. Holmes, who is watching, and he stated that he did not survey, an official survey with his faculty. However, they have had conversations with each teacher, and it's been positive and the four-block scheduling and that they are very excited, his staff is, about doing block.
Okay, board members, any other questions for Dr. Arnold, or for the principals, or for the principals that are listening? I think the conversation at first was, are the teachers aware? Are they on board? We've seemed like we've answered that, faculty and teachers. Um, we've, we've had a good explanation of how the system will work. I've, I've been a witness to block with some of my children. And so, um, are there any other questions? I did receive a couple emails about the block schedule, and I think if those people are listening, they have had some answers to the, uh, question that they asked me, uh, to ask Dr. Arnold. But is there any other board member that has any uncertainty, uh, about the block schedule or not?
So, what I would ask at this time, unless you have questions about other elements of the plan, that we go ahead and, um, seek a approval of the whole plan, so we can put that out to parents and they can start getting ready for next year.
So, the two things we're talking about, first was the time-
You've already done that one?
We've done that, so now we're on block or not, block or not block, right?
Just, no.
The rest of it.
Just the rest of it, okay, I guess, I'm straight. So, yes, ma'am?
Um, just one additional thing. I know we had a lot of feedback about face coverings. Can you just make clear for us-
Yes.
-what that will mean for next year?
Right. So, right now, we are under Executive Order seventy-nine, which still requires face masks worn inside schools by all personnel, all students. Um, we, and I explained this the last time, is every time those restrictions are lessened, we will lessen them. Uh, you know, right now, we have to abide by an executive order. Uh, but if that executive order goes away, then so will that mandate. So, we're gonna, you know, we'll follow what the executive order tells us to do.
And outside?
Outside, they don't have to wear them currently.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I knew that was one of the bigger questions I thought he might get to.
Yeah, that was, quite frankly, the probably the biggest issue.
But I think, I think what you said is, is what we have to do. We're still abiding by the, uh, the, the executive orders, and so I have to do that where I work as well. So, um, do we have a vote, a, a motion to approve the block schedule and every, no?
Just that twenty-one, twenty-two school year plan.
Yeah, the whole plan.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year recommendations for returning.
Okay, we have a properly motion by Ms. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second, oh, sorry.
Ms. Berg?
Everyone, okay, Ms. Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Just so that we don't get, uh, things twisted, uh, if parents have concern, uh, concerns about this, uh, we would ask that you would call your building principal. Uh, you can still ask us, but we've had a very good discussion of this tonight, but in case there's some confusion, uh, the building principals would be more than happy to answer your question. We're moving on.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Historically, in June, we set the one, uh, July date, uh, usually because there, there could be some, um, issues with the Fourth of July week. The Fourth of July week, uh, takes on the second Thursday of the month. So, uh, we would like to, uh, offer that we go July fifteenth, which is the third Thursday of July, to have our, our, our July meeting.
Board members, is that on your schedule? Can it be?
I'll be sitting on the beach, but, um-
Well-
It's July fifteenth?
The month of July is a little, little funny.
Yes, ma'am, July fifteenth.
Yeah, that's how, yeah.
Is that good or bad?
Well, because, at our school division, most of our, most of our staff is gone that week. That's, that's the problem for us.
Um, just so you know, for scheduling the room, I think there's another committee that meets in here.
It's already done. We got it straight, yeah.
And are we going to talk about board schedules later?
That's at the end, yeah. I have that on the agenda for the, the remainder of the calendar.
So, if the fif, let us just tentatively say the fifteenth now is okay, and we can all come back, that's a problem, five, six of us are somewhere in Las Vegas, or in the-
Mr. Terry's got another room at the-
Yeah, we all going to the beach, we're doing Zoom.
I'll do my best not to get sand in the computer, how about that?
We need a little laughter. Do I have a motion that that date in July is, uh, would be okay?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's always subject to change if we can't make it. Okay, uh, let us look at the consent agenda, five oh one, five oh two, five oh three, and five oh four. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, take item four dot oh three and, uh, no, I want to pull, um, five dot oh three and turn it into an action item four point oh four.
Uh, you've had the request from Ms. Thompson that we will remove five point oh three and turn it into an action item of five point oh four. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, she just made it.
You just made, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So, what the consideration of approval of, of federal assurances are, uh, federal, uh, our federal title programs, so we have Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, uh, we have Title Six B, which is primarily special education, uh, our CTE, our Perkins Grant, and also our nutrition are all titled, titled programs, federal programs. What assurances are, is that the board assures the federal government that the school system will spend the money exactly the way we've said we're going to spend the money. Um, and so that occurs when we submit our title application. Um, if there's not an assurance from the board, the title application won't be accepted. Um, so that's, 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 uh, you guys have already, at our last meeting, done the assurances for, I believe, Title Six B and-
Carl Perkins.
Carl Perkins, yeah, the CTE. So, that, that's the, that's the setup for everybody, and Ms. Thompson, do you have some questions?
Miss Ma'am?
Uh, yes, just one question. Um, I know that, um, there's a lot of material in there, so I tried to absorb it all. But my question is, is there anything that you know of in there that would be in opposition to the mandate or the ban that we put in place at our last meeting?
No, ma'am.
No conflicts there?
No, ma'am, no.
I just don't want that to, okay, that was my question.
No, and as you know, most of this is, goes to staff. It's how we pay for personnel in those areas. And so, that's a, that's a significant portion, yeah. But that, yeah, that, because we write the plan, and then it gets accepted or not.
Okay.
But in, and, I'm not sure how many we've ever had that been denied, and we're not changing them, right?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, if not, uh, we'll entertain a motion to accept four point oh four.
Approve, approve consideration of federal assurance, yeah.
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, approve the federal assurances.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, sir. We're now down to administrative.
Did we approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Now, you do.
Oh, now we can.
Everything but federal.
Now, now it's all done. Okay, you're right, thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Uh, so let's, is that you, Mr. Grazer? You making them?
Uh, I move that we approve the, uh, rest of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I might, um, at the last meeting, we did approve a couple of folks that I'd like to introduce to you. They are here tonight.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Marvin McGinnis and his wife Pam are here. Dr. McGinnis, welcome so. Dr. McGinnis has been hired as the supervisor of innovation and learning. As you know, that was two years ago in our budget, and we did not fill it last year because of the uncertainty of our budget. Dr. McGinnis attended University of Virginia, where he earned a bachelor's degree in education, as well as a master's of arts in teaching, with a moderate communication in government and foreign affairs. He then went on to get his doctorate in education leadership from Virginia Tech. Dr. McGinnis has thirty years of experience in public education. That began in nineteen ninety-one. He has six years of classroom experience teaching history, world studies, and modern English, and twenty-four years experience as an administrator. He has served as an assistant principal at Bedford Elementary, as principal at Benjamin Franklin Middle, and as a principal at Body Camp Elementary before joining ACPS. He joined the Amherst County Public Schools team in two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year as the principal of Madison Heights Elementary, and has continued to serve in that leadership role to date. And we are extremely excited to get the innovation ball rolling for Amherst County. So, welcome, Dr. McGinnis.
And I'm looking forward to it.
I also have Ms. Robin Wheeler, who will be the supervisor of literacy, early childhood, and federal programs. So, Ms. Wheeler earned her bachelor's degree from Lynchburg College, began her careers at, in education as an elementary teacher at Amherst Elementary School. She earned her master's degree in reading from the University of Virginia, and continued her educational career with ACPS as a reading specialist. Uh, Ms. Wheeler served as a reading specialist at Elan Temperance and Central Elementary. In two thousand sixteen, she earned her master's degree in educational leadership, and the following year, accepted a position as the Title One Literacy Instructional Support Specialist at the school administration office where she is currently serving. And she has, there'll be great continuity in this position because she's picked up a lot of the responsibilities since, uh, Dr. Lyle has gone. So, welcome, uh, Ms. Wheeler.
Any other?
That is it.
Okay. All right, we're moving right on into, um, administrative, six point oh one. Mr. Cock?
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, today was the last day of school, what was an irregular, a regular school year, uh, but now it's time to get started on our summer projects. Uh, at Amherst Elementary, the general contractor and his subs are ready, pre-staged, to begin work Monday, June fourteenth, on the bathroom upgrade project there. On the drainage and soil, soil stabilization projects at Amherst Middle School and Manat, Madison Heights Elementary School, the specifications addendums are completed, and the bids are due also next Monday, June fourteenth, at two P.M. The work on that project is scheduling the bid specs to begin, uh, one week after, uh, notice to proceed is given to the contractor. So, as soon as we get those bids and you give him notice to proceed, we will go forward with that. Are there any questions on those two projects?
Sounds good.
Can you remind me what the estimated cost is on the bathroom renovations?
Hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And what's going to be done to them?
That, those projects are like they are at the other elementary schools. We go through and, uh, we were, we're gonna upgrade all the current fixtures. We scarify the current ceramic tile floor and put down an epoxy floor with an anti-skid material in it that makes it easier to clean and sanitize. And we put a, what's called a, like, plastic type product on the walls that also makes them easier to clean and sanitize. And that will be in all the student bathrooms, as well as the adult bathrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the renovations at that particular school? Okay, what else you got, Ms. Cock?
Uh, the only other thing I have tonight, Madam Chair, I'd like to take just a moment to publicly express my thanks and appreciation to this board, all past boards, Dr. Arnold, and my fellow administrators for allowing me the opportunity and support over the last thirteen years to serve and assist the students and staff of Amherst County Public Schools toward the common goal of every child, every day. Again, I thank you.
So, Mr. Cock kind of stole my thunder because I was going to, I made one, uh, one comment before, uh, I wanted to recognize him publicly, and, and I think one of the things, last year, when we received our report from CRA regarding our buildings, uh, number one, from our report, is we found out that they were all old buildings. Uh, but number two, they were in great shape. Uh, structurally, cleanliness, those kinds of things were, they were in great shape, and that is in no small part due to the work that, uh, Mr. Cock has done here for the last thirteen years. So, I want to publicly thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold.
Okay, uh, six point oh two.
Okay, so that, uh, since Dr. Wells, uh, and he did graduate, a young man, this morning, so, uh, yeah, he is. But you have attached, uh, to Board Docs, a student suspension list. I have also attached several documents of OCR discipline data, and, uh, Ms. Thompson had made that request earlier. And so, we're giving you the data, and you don't need to do anything with it other than just start to peruse it. We're going to do a, a full report. Uh, Dr. Wells and, and Ms. Jennings, uh, Dr. Jennings will come and report out on, on the specifics of that data. But I just wanted you to have it for a full month before, before we started, uh, talking about. And so, that, there's nothing, I, I need you to do with it other than to say-
It's a folder?
Huh?
In a folder?
It's in the, uh-
It's on Board Docs.
Uh, Board Docs. There, there are about ten attachments. It's a lot.
Okay.
And that's Dr. Wells's report.
All right, Ms. Crouch?
Madam Chairman, member of the board, you have at your place the budget monitoring reports, the object code reports, revenue receipts for, through the end of May twenty twenty-one. I would be glad to answer any questions. Currently, we are looking at approximately one point one million dollars as a balance at the end of this fiscal year, and Dr. Arnold plans to address, uh, a request later on in the meeting. On the receipts, you will note that there's a donation, a contribution from Amherst Cares in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Amherst Cares, under the leadership of Mrs. Beth Gamble, continue to write grants to support Amherst County Public Schools, every child, every day, and we want to formally thank her for this.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And your packet, uh, we had a request from a board member for salary comparisons of area school board members and county government, and that document is at your place. You also have an update on a regional comparison of teacher salary schedules that will be in effect, that, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. If you don't have any questions, I'd like to continue.
Okay.
Mr. Neighbors and I, uh, participated in a webinar for Medicaid reimbursement last week, and, Mr. Neighbors also participated in another webinar yesterday. Um, our plan is to complete the necessary steps to be in a position to begin simple billing during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Additional details, including project costs and reimbursements, will be provided at a future board meeting. Do you have any questions on that?
How long about until we get the update and, and details on everything? Next month? Two months?
We're, we're hoping that next month, we'll be able to bring you more specific figures. The individual that we met with last week, um, promised to give us some of those numbers, so we'd have a better idea of what we're actually talking about from a fiscal standpoint, but next month is what we're anticipating with that.
Okay, was that Richmond you're referring to?
No, there's actually multiple agencies that we're talking with. The one I'm referring to happens to be the vendor that I'm going to speak about here in just a few minutes. Uh, so I'll kind of weave that into what that part is. But, uh, yesterday was our meeting with Richmond.
All right, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, may I continue?
Continue, thank you.
Uh, recently, board members received correspondence from the SBA discussing the maintenance of equity with the Cares funds. This is just making sure that we do not supplant the new Cares- This is just making sure that we do not supplant the new CARES money for our state and local dollars. We will be participating in upcoming webinars in June 23rd to ensure that we're following all the guidelines as possible. We're in the process of completing the application and working on the application to present to you all for the 7.3 million dollars, the last CARES Act that we received.
Any questions?
Just Crouch, do you know where Amherst County would fall in the ranking of like the, the neediest schools, high need? I think like the 50% of the schools below would be high need. How they would allocate the funds?
As, we already know that the funds are, we, we're getting seven, approximately 7.3 million.
Well, I just went part of that Mo equity.
The equity? That is just asking us, making sure that we're not going to cut positions that we currently fund with-
Right, but I think it addresses state funds as well, does it not?
We got the 7.3 based on our poverty numbers. That's, that's how, you know, if, if we had more poverty, we would have gotten more if we had less.
Right.
And so-
But I thought this was per pupil funding that it was referencing.
They use our Title I application.
So it's not a composite index that's based on, that's a state thing? Is that right? The ability, is that, is that a factor in it or is it?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
And that's why we're going to be on the webinar on the 23rd of June to make sure that we are following all the guidelines.
Here was what I was looking at, and I could be totally wrong, but it was talking about state funding, that, you know, it has to be distributed based on their formulas. And I think the schools would be ranked with highest need and you couldn't take so much funding away from them.
Right, and we're not taking any funding away from any of our schools. That, this, what's happened when we had the Great Recession in 2009 and stimulus money came in and everybody had to cut their operational budgets, they replaced their operational budget cuts with that stimulus money. This time, we haven't had to cut our budget and the CARES Act money is in addition. So we're not, we're not like replacing anything. They don't want school systems to, to cut back on what they normally spend because they have this CARES Act money to kind of fill in.
Or locality to take it.
Or locality to take it. And so when we brought you in the budget, how we intended to spend the CARES Act money for the CARES Act II money, we showed you all of the additional things that we were going to pay for. And for the CARES Act III, that's exactly the same idea as well because it's, it's adding to, it's not taking away from our operational budget.
And I understand what you're saying, that makes much more sense to me. I guess just the one caveat that I was trying to look for as we moved down the road is if state funding is shifting and if Amherst doesn't get as much from state funds, that may be something we need to communicate to board supervisors. But if I've misinterpreted that, I'll go back and reread it.
I don't, I don't, it is not my understanding that this money impacts the state funds too much.
It's just the CARES Act funding. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah?
No, ma'am, I've got one more.
Keep going.
So some good news is with the Alio system, today we successfully uploaded accounts payable from Alio to the Bright system, which is a long time coming. And the Bright system is what the county uses. So they took a file that we had downloaded and they uploaded it to the system and printed a report. So now it's not dual keying.
The bridge is there.
We're working on it. We will, we are also doing parallel with our payroll. And we have been able to work with the other softwares to download and upload to Alio without having to rekey several different files into different softwares. So that is a milestone. I would like to thank the staff and the business office for all of their support and dedication in getting this task done, as well as the people in H R and instructional side, because they have really worked hard to get the, the software done, as well as the county employees. The business office on the county side has worked with us to get the data and to make sure that we are talking to each other. Last but not least, with the Head Start trailers or the, the mobile units at Central and Elan Elementary School, because we do not have Head Start at those two locations anymore, they are at the point that they want to remove those two buildings from the premises. Elan Elementary, we have talked to them about purchasing the mobile unit from Elan Elementary School, and they have given us a cost of 31,000 dollars to keep it there. We can use CARES Act money to keep that mobile unit there in the event we need it for overcrowding. The mobile unit at Central is not in the best condition and it would probably take more money to fix it up than it would to purchase it. They told us we could purchase it for 16,000 dollars. A new mobile unit would cost us approximately 115,000 dollars. Mr. Crouch?
I don't know, what's, and the one in Elan's not as, I was deferring to Ms. Thompson because I know that's kind of her own district and she was, she's asked questions about that up there. But what, what kind of shape is that? That one in, are you going to comment on any? Okay. Of all the units, that is the newest unit, that one was upgraded by Head Start several years ago. Structurally, it's in good shape, inside, inside and out, it's had new underpinning, the roofs in good condition. That building is in good shape. And you'll get at least, should get at least another 10, 15 years of life. That's about the life expectancy of one of those mobile units. Was that brought up for a motion, I guess, as far as you get?
Well, we can do the consensus or the board agrees if they have questions.
I have a question. So I know we've got some issues with Elan and, and space and that would be a good thing to have the mobile unit for that. Do we need more than that one mobile unit?
We don't believe we do right now. We actually are at a place where we don't have to add any classrooms right now. But we want to have that space just, just in case that we could actually add another classroom out there. That's going to give us some flexibility. We certainly don't think there's going to be a need for, for two more. But that's going to, obviously you saw the price on the renovation at Elan, it's obviously a much more affordable way to make sure that we're not overcrowded there.
Do we still have classes that are working on the stage area?
We do now.
We do now? Next year?
I don't think next year is going to-
Next year, and Mr. Neighbors can probably address this, he moved a program out of Elan this year and moved it to a different school, which opened up multiple rooms. And we're just looking at class sizes in regards to what that would look like.
And how are we looking at Central?
We're okay, we're okay. We, we don't see that we're going to need to add something, but it's a lot like Elan in that it is, it is, their trajectory is going up. And so we do want to make sure that we have some space available to them, for them to do what they need to do.
But by the time that happens, that building's already in bad shape now and it will have aged even more.
The one-
And it's Central, the one at Central, not Elan.
It's not-
Elan's more pressing and from what I remember from that study.
Yeah, so the one at Elan is more pressing and we can purchase it as is. The one at Central is not as pressing and we don't really need to purchase what's there.
Sure.
We need to, to buy another one and that wouldn't show up until about October anyway. So the good thing is, is that it's not needed right away, but it could be. And I don't know, Ms. Ligon, what maybe Head Start, what their ideas are, but I just don't like the fact that they would just be removed altogether. You know, if the one at Central, we wouldn't want to pay for the one that's sitting there.
Right.
And they're going to come take it otherwise because they're paying rent on those. Head Start is. And they, I guess they've stopped.
Yes.
As far as I'm aware, yes, sir.
Yeah.
The mobile unit at Elan, you said it's structurally sound. How are things inside, like, you know, the paint or the carpets and air conditioning? Is that the kids have noticed?
Air conditioning is, all the structure is, everything's operational. It has a tile floor, tiles, tile floors in good shape. Walls, like all classrooms, could use some touch up, but that's not a, that's not a big issue. There's no holes or anything in the walls or, or major damage that needs to be repaired.
Thank you.
Could, as far as the H P C, I imagine it doesn't have the ionization things that we have in the other building, is that correct? Or you may not even know at this point, but- It does not, but that's, that's a little add-on. Right, it's a little box that they can be added, okay. Like 1,500, 2,000 dollars to add those, to add up, to add those all into a unit. So they could be added on. I, I just, to give them the same, you know, same levels of sanitation protection as the other students inside the building would be, would be my request. But that's something that could be added on, yes.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the mobile unit for Elan and even add on the extra ionization on air conditioning.
Second.
Second. Hold in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Was that Elan or?
Just Elan.
Elan.
They can come get Central, I guess, the, the unit.
So I guess the question then becomes, are y'all in, in agreement on purchasing a new one for Central? Or do you want us to, to wait until? That's, that's the issue for Central. They're going to need it, but-
I thought I heard you say that they did not need it.
Not right now. Not specifically right now, but we, we project the need.
Would the reason to be buy it now because we have CARES Act money?
But we also have CARES Act money through next year too, so.
Are the costs going to be going up next year? Like the cost of everything else is going up?
It's, you said it was a 28%-
It was a 28% increase in 10 months. When, when do we forecast that need? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's just going up every year and so we're, we're really getting tight there. It's feeling like what we're dealing with at Elan. And we certainly, and I'm going to defer to you guys.
Currently, right now, we have enrollment in our kindergarten, current enrollment is 52. They are sitting at 39 registered already and that is high for them. We also know that their Smart Start programs there have increased and we, we feel that they're going to meet those limits there as well. We also have some of our most neediest students' programs at that building. And the sensory rooms that, that are needed for the high needs program there is essential to that, running that program and we want to keep those intact. We have, we just put those in in the timeframe that I've been in Amherst County and those have been phenomenal, phenomenal for that program. So I don't want to take those out to put in a classroom if we ever needed a classroom, if that makes sense.
Is there a belief that we can wait?
Again, I think there's no pressing need for next school year, but beyond that, in addition to what Dr. Norman said, the program that she referenced in regards to the autism program that's there, that's growing. We're actually adding a third teacher to that program for this coming school year. There's also the consideration of what Head Start will eventually look like again. This year was, what's coming up in this year was significantly impacted by the split grant between multiple agencies. And so those monies are going to different age levels, different groups. So there's always that possibility that a Head Start program could return to that area in Amherst at some point as well. So a couple of different pieces in regards to ways that Central could, could grow.
You said that the autism program there is growing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any reason that could not be moved to Amherst Elementary School?
So we're actually exploring ways to be able to distribute that program amongst other schools. There's been discussions specifically about Madison Heights being a potential site that we could also utilize because we have students that are traveling from the south end of the county up to Central. So we're looking at ways to be able to push that program out beyond just Central. There's a concern that I've always had that anytime we, we centralize a program like that, we lose the ability to build capacity in other buildings. So I think beyond just the space concern there, it's also about being able to provide services a little bit closer to home for all of our students.
So you're looking at Madison Heights and Central?
At this point, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just for space purposes, can you look at Madison Heights and Amherst Elementary?
We, we certainly could. I know Amherst Elementary is also a site where we're kind of at that point, we're a few classrooms away from being in a similar spot. I don't think that's an impending or immediate need, but we also have some programs that are more oriented towards behavior in that school. So looking at distributing some of the administrative roles that, that come with those types of programs is also a consideration there.
Yeah, I think, I would suggest we, we wait and let, let Mr. Neighbors do some of his work, watch the numbers, and then just reserve the right to come back to you if, if necessary.
Well, I was wondering if this should be something that we talked about, how fluid that C I P plan is, once they gave us the initial, if that should be something that you analyze the attendance projections and figure out where that falls within that to make those determinations too. Because I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is, I mean, I consider that, and if structured, I consider that kind of a C I P kind of item.
We would only use CARES Act for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it actually meets the exact definition of-
Oh, sure, sure, with the space.
Yeah, space.
Are we in jeopardy of not spending all the CARES Act money? Or is this, I mean?
We don't, I hope so. We, we believe we're going to spend it all.
Okay, I mean, we're not looking for things to spend it on, is what we're saying, so.
Not necessarily.
If we proceed with that high school renovation, that'll-
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to have as much as we can.
Gotcha.
For certain projects, yes.
Just throwing a question out there, I know we were looking at spending some money for bathroom renovations that we just talked about. Is that something we want to move forward with or do we want to hold off on that?
I think we are, are we already in a contract with?
Yes.
Already in contract?
Yeah, we've already, the contract, everything's already signed, everything's issued. I said that's scheduled to start Monday.
Okay, thank you.
So no other action needs to be taken?
Okay. Ms. Crouch, that's it?
That's it.
Good stuff, good stuff. Dr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So as you can only imagine, we have been racing to the finish line to end out this school year. But we're not finished yet. We had lots of programs that took place out in our buildings today celebrating our students and our teachers. I do want to share with you at your place, you have information that you had requested regarding our preliminary testing. This is not projecting scores. This specifically is dealing with the participation of our students who have tested. I was asked to break this out by those that are in person as well as those that did remote. And I'm going to like walk you through the first portion of this. This testing, if I can just let you know, it goes on all the way through June 25th and then we start summer school testing. So we have quite a bit of testing left to take care of before we close out the official end of this school year. If you look at the chart, it just rolls across where the number of students that were required to take the state assessment, then the total number of students that actually tested during the school year. If you look at blue and yellow, blue and yellow makes green, so 208, if you're looking at that first level of third grade, 208 and 52, 208 were students that were face-to-face and came, and were here to take the S O L test. 52 students were A R A students and they actually came into the building on those testing days on Fridays and took the state test, which we were very happy about that. That makes up our 260 that were total students taking the S O L test. If you move further across the page, the total students that were A R A, 22 that took the Virginia Remote Student Progress Test. Then we had seven of those that, the next column are those that opted out. And then the final is those students that did not, were not opting out and did not take a test. These are still parents that we are trying to get their students to come in and either take the state test or- or to actually take the remote readiness test that is required. If you have any questions regarding this, once you get down into the testing information, please feel free to reach out to me or Mr. Maddox. And he, we will be more than happy to kind of walk you through what we know is going on in the testing world. Any questions on that? Okay. I have three more things at your place. The two are just updates that you had requested. And I would say that more now than ever, it is really critical that we get the information out to our parents to register their students for kindergarten and to register their students for our pre-K services and programs. These are just two updated pieces of information to give you, to give you kind of a guideline by the month of where we're headed in enrollment that's coming into our schools. So please, as you're out in the community and you see small children, say, "Have you registered your child for kindergarten or pre-K?" We do have that up on social media, and things are going well. So that's just information for you. I also have a large stack of information for you regarding the request for dual enrollment CVCC information. I listed out the courses that we currently teach at the high school that are dual-enrolled, that are our teachers or in our staff, but they fall under the guidelines of the Memorandum of Understanding for CVCC. The first thing that's in is just the listing of the courses. The second part is the Memorandum of Understanding between us and Central Virginia Community College. And then the remaining pages under that are each course syllabus from each of the dual-enrolled courses up there. So you can take a look at those, that curriculum. All of the curriculum is run through Central Virginia Community College, and that is within our Memorandum of Understanding with them. And I'll, I'll answer any questions after you have an opportunity to look through that information. And then the last thing that I would like to just mention to you tonight is I'd like to recognize Ms. Wanda Smith. I believe she's still here. Ms. Smith, whether or not she would tell anybody, but she was earlier this week, announced by the Virginia Department of Education to sit on the foundational concepts team to develop the theories, the concepts, the standards, and curriculum framework for the K through seven grade mathematics. And we are ecstatic that she's able to join in that. And Madam Chair, that is all I have for tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Neighbors, who's gonna finish out instruction. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Several items for you tonight I wanted to bring for your information. The first is an update on the VAP, Virginia Alternative Assessment Program. This is the alternative assessment that's available for our students that meet criteria for our adapted curriculum programs within our schools. So it's the alternative to the SOL assessments that our general education students take at the end of each year. There is a transition underway. Currently, the VAP is collected as a portfolio assessment, so it's a collection of work completed over the course of the school year by students in their classroom setting. The transition would take them from the portfolio assessment to a more, what looks more like an SOL, a computer-based, also available in paper format, assessment that is standardized based on updated standards, I'll talk about here in a moment, and multiple choice. So ultimately, at this point, we are at a place where we've been provided relatively minimal information from the state. But this is a, it's a big transition for this program, VAP and its portfolio. Current assessment and how that looks with, as a portfolio has been in existence for quite some time. Making this transition to a more standardized assessment is going to be a, a culture shift for those programs and for those classrooms. Currently, those classrooms operate under what are known as the ASOLs. There's a transition underway to what they're calling VESOLs, V-E-S-O-Ls, that are updates to those standards. What we have seen thus far is very encouraging. They are much more functional in nature, much more targeted towards skills that these students are going to need as they make that transition out of high school eventually. But ultimately, again, we have seen very little of that to date. I do want the board to be aware that this transition is underway. Also want you to be aware that at this point, it is very much theoretical in its concept. It's a theory that we're working on, or that the state is working on, I should say, to be able to move forward and how we make this better, better data for our students, I think is ultimately their goal. We wanna be able to see more of that. I wanna be able to bring some of that to you, to give you ideas about what that's actually gonna look like, including the format of the assessment itself. We are anticipating to get that information by the end of summer, is what we have been told. But we've also been told that could extend into August or even September before we receive the formatting information for that assessment, but also the new standards, the VESOLs themselves. We would obviously like to see those immediately, to be able to prepare our teachers and families and students for what that's going to look like. But hopefully, they're able to move a little bit quicker than their anticipated timeline at this point. They have told us that this will be the assessment mode that is used next school year, regardless of when these components are released, and the standards are expected to be taught next school year as well. So we'll be spending a lot of time with our teachers in the adaptive curriculum once these standards are available to ensure that they are prepared, have everything they need from a resource standpoint to be able to comply with those components. I think I gave you all the information I have on it, but I would certainly be glad to attempt to answer any questions you might have for me at this time.
Okay.
Please throw.
All right. And again, as soon as I know something more, I'll, I'll bring it right to you. My second point tonight, I wanted to update you on another transition to Virginia IEP. So currently, we utilize IEP online as our online database for all of our IEP and 504 related documents. The same parent company, PCG, has worked with the state to develop a new system, Virginia IEP. The vast majority of divisions in the state have already transitioned to Virginia IEP. We will actually be the fifth cohort moving into this particular system. So we wanted to let a few other divisions go through first and, and work out some of the bugs. But we do feel confident about where that system has come to, and it does bring us in line with more divisions in the state. Currently, it is a process, a significant process, to get paperwork from other divisions with Virginia IEP. It allows us to instantaneously get the records from the other division. It literally transitions over in the system. In addition, Virginia IEP offers a translation module, so six additional languages are available to automatically translate documents, which again, is currently a very laborious process, and we have staff that do that for us. We have agencies that we work with in that regard. So being able to do that within the system is going to be tremendous. Another component of that is Medicaid billing. There's an entire format that's available for that, which streamlines that process, automatically links to IEP documents. So a lot of functionality this company provides, and that is the agency that we were speaking to last week and getting some more information about what that looks like. Their representative also sits on a lot of the Medicaid committees and different things at the state level and was able to give us a lot of information as a fledgling division in that way, to be able to guide us with that. Is also gonna be getting back to us on what our specific numbers look like in regards to eligibility, as well, as what we could anticipate from a reimbursement standpoint. So very excited about the functionality of this new system. We actually have our kickoff training with VDOE staff and PCG staff tomorrow morning. That'll be about four hours long. We have a steering committee that we've established with teachers, speech pathologists, school psychs, and the rest to get a lot of different perspectives on how we should be rolling this out. They're gonna be participating in that training alongside the staff here at the school board office and our lead teachers, our lead special education teachers in each building. So really trying to pull that leadership team together to help us continue to move forward with this transition. We will be offering trainings, virtual trainings over the summer. We hate to do that, but ultimately, we want to ensure that we have our, our teachers prepared. That preparation is really gonna be critical as we're moving into next school year. We're asking them to utilize this right off the bat. So we want to be able to give that training, give some time in the system, which is scheduled to go live on July first. So trainings are gonna occur through the very end of June, through about the third week in July. All of that's gonna be recorded in self-pace, so teachers, wherever they may be, if they're on the beach like Mr. Terry, I would be able to pull that up, utilize that. We're gonna be offering trainings and then follow-up Q and A sessions to ensure that we're giving teachers the time to really work through that and figure out what their questions might be. All of our documents that are currently locked in Iowa are gonna migrate over on June eighteenth. All of that's gonna be in PDF format, so another big task in front of us is making sure we have usable records in this new system in Virginia IEP. So in addition to having teachers train and paying them for that training time over the summer, we're also going to be reimbursing, or I should say, we're gonna be paying teachers to pull those documents into the system over the summer as well. So they're gonna be taking those PDFs and actually converting them into what the format in this new system is. Again, not something that we necessarily like to ask them to do over the summer, but it's really going to compel that time in the system to make sure that they are very familiar with it and what the functionality is. The beginning of the year is a very busy time for us in regards to addendums, making changes to IEPs, ensuring those records are accurate. We wanna make sure that teachers are really prepared for that season as it comes forward. Again, we want this to be fully operational by the start of school. We feel like we are putting things in place as we're able to, to get to that point. We're also extending a tremendous amount of grace to our teachers in regards to learning this new system and being ready for that. So we're gonna be working with them constantly through the first grading period, certainly, to ensure that they have that technical support that they need, working with them individually if necessary to make sure they've got those skills they need to navigate that new system. So again, I think I've given you all the information I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on that transition.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I greatly appreciate everything you've been doing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right. Got a little, little more from you, Ms. Neighbors. I did wanna provide another update to our efforts in regards to maintenance of records. We are making progress. I believe the last time we spoke about this, I told the board that our goal was to be finished by the end of the school year. Since that is today, I can say that unfortunately, I've not met that goal. But we are making really good progress. We do anticipate to be completed with the substantial components that will work by the end of June in an effort to be able to push that out to leadership and other colleagues that need to review those components so that next month, we'll be able to bring that to you in a more finished product and let you know what we're looking at with that record maintenance. We do have a very solid framework in place in regards to what needs to be in those cumulative files. We've also spent a lot of time talking about what can be digital as opposed to physically housed in the files there at school. There's a great amount of leniency that's provided by the Library of Virginia, as well as code, to, to have some of those records virtual as opposed to being paper copy. But of course, we're seeking additional advisement on that, ensuring that we are staying compliant with all of those pieces. We're also working towards updated procedures for who gets to access the records, how those are accessed, how we send records to other divisions, how we receive those, and be able to put all that out in a very organized format for you in July, is the plan at this point. Again, happy to answer any questions you might have about that process.
Okay.
All right, almost there. Did wanna give a quick update on summer programming, which, as all of you know, starts on Monday. We are very, very excited to say that we now are well over six hundred students we are expecting to participate in some form or fashion. A little over six fifty, actually, is what our, I'm gonna call that our final number, although we'll see. Tomorrow, tomorrow's another day before Monday, so we'll see where we get to. I do want to take a moment and highlight Ms. Rhonda Campbell, who has done incredible work in getting transportation together for the vast majority of students that are gonna be coming into our programs on Monday. She has been working quite literally around the clock to get all of those children routed, all of those bus drivers together, and has just done an incredible job doing that. So I wanted to make sure that I highlighted her tonight and the work that she has done. As of an hour ago, we are one hundred percent fully staffed, so we are ready to go on Monday for those students as they are coming in. Made me sweat just a little bit later on today, but we, we got that done and appreciate all the work that's been done to make that happen again. Ultimately, we know that this has really been a, a race against the clock to get this done in time. There's a lot of planning that's gone into it. There is a lot of work that has been done. Ms. Wanda Smith is another individual that I'd like to highlight, who has really led the charge in getting the curriculum established for specifically our middle school programs. There's a lot of new territory that they're trying to cover, both from an academic standpoint and from an enrichment standpoint. And it's just some amazing work that's been completed over these past six weeks. Ultimately, all of that work, I do think, has led us to having a framework that is very, very solid to be able to build future programs on. And I'm just excited about what all of our staff, our teachers, our administrators have been able to accomplish in getting this summer program, which is huge compared to years past, really in a wonderful place to get going. The last thing I wanted to mention there is that we would love for you to come out and see our summer programs over the next three weeks. That's where we'll be having the in-person programming at the middle school and high school levels. The projects that they are gonna be completing, the themes that they have established for that are just, they're a lot of fun, is the only way to say it. I would love for you guys to be able to come out and see that. For those of you that have experienced the Power Scholars Program before at the elementary level, it is an amazing program. The teachers are just wholeheartedly committed to what they're doing with those students over the summer, and that runs in the next four weeks, so that goes up until July ninth. So as you are able to, we would love to host you at one of those programs. I know the students would love to see you as well. So feel free to come out and check out what's going on over the summer. And again, a reminder on sites, that's happening at Madison Heights Elementary, as well as Central Elementary, both middle schools and the high school.
I'm excited about summer school.
As are we.
You good?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have questions for Ms.? He's covered a wide map there.
Yeah.
It is.
Human resources, Dr. Ahn, is that you?
It is me tonight. And so at your place and on board docs, we've updated the current vacancies, and it's actually not up to date because we've, we've hired a couple today. So that number will continue to come down. But this looks good, just from a historical perspective, that we're in a really good place in the middle of June. We, we certainly worry about math. We always worry about math because there's not as many candidates out there as other, other subjects. But Mr. Gallagher and his team feel like they're in a good place. The principals have been doing interviews while they're still trying to close down school, and so all that's happening and feel pretty good about where we are. Any questions about our vacancies? And so the other document that Mr. Gallagher has provided was based on a, a request regarding exit data. And he's given a three-year review of exit data. You should have a bar graph and a kind of a summary. But I would think that the biggest three issues in terms of exiting, teachers that leave us are retirement, career change or promotion, and relocation. This year seems, we seem to have more relocation than normal, so people moving to different areas. And we also had a larger number this year, or a larger percentage of our zero-to-five-year teachers. Most of the other ones stayed pretty stable, and even the twenty-plus, which is good news, actually has decreased. And so, but as you see across the board, retirement is, is always the, the largest percentage of why folks leave. Any questions regarding this data?
Thank you.
All right, so I think I'm still up with my matters. And so the first thing, as, as we heard from one of our, our speakers tonight, how wonderful our staff has been this year to, to, to provide the type of education that they did in these conditions was, was pretty amazing. And so I would like to bring to you tonight two things that I would like for you to consider. One being an end-of-year bonus for all staff in Amherst County public schools. And then I would like for you to pass a resolution that we have written to say formally as a board how much you appreciate their efforts this year. As far as the bonus, I'll talk specifics on that one. We are recommending that we give a five-hundred-dollar end-of-year bonus to full-time employees. That is teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, that, that's the whole, whole range. And two-hundred-and-fifty for part-time employees. And based on, Ms. Crouch has done the math on this, and that would cost us about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. As she said earlier, we are ending the year with about one-point-one million dollars. So we certainly have the ability in terms of our, our budget to... do this, which would leave $660,000 that would go into our CIP. And so I would like to take any questions or on that one first. Maybe we look at these as separate issues.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Specifics on the dissemination of a hire date, or if a teacher has retired this year and won't be employed July 1? What's the criteria?
They work for us in the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay.
So even if they're leaving.
I don't want to see a teacher that's retiring get missed out on the bonus if they stuck to the school year with us.
No, no, no. The people that won't are people that were just hired for next year.
Okay.
So if they were with us, they're going to get the bonus.
And this bonus will probably come to employees in July. It would come out of this year's.
Right, okay.
And it would be a separate check, so it's not going to be included within the year. So they would be able to see more of that. And we have talked to the county, the county finance office to ensure that they are, feel that they can get this accomplished as well.
Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Did you give it to someone who resigned?
What do you mean, resigned during the year or resigned for the, like they worked all year?
I would say if they resigned prior to this board meeting.
And didn't finish the year.
Didn't finish the year. I would say no. But I didn't know if you have, I mean, do you have that criteria outline?
We don't. We don't. We could certainly say all staff that completed the year.
Yeah. I would try. Yeah, I would like that.
Yeah, if you're saying somebody that walked out in February, yeah, that person is, did not complete the year. I think that'd be an easy enough.
No, that's what I was running through my head too, trying to figure out, to make sure that it was a fairness, I guess, with the.
Yes. I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions about number one?
Well.
I don't have any questions, but I just would like to say thank you, all the teachers and the staff, and everybody's just gone well above and beyond this year and spending a year like none other, I'm sure. But this just dropped in the bucket. Can't say thank you enough.
And so I would recommend that you make a motion to provide that end-of-year bonus based on the criteria outlined by Miss Wright.
Second.
Count on favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Okay, this next one, I'm just going to read the resolution of support. You should have it at your place. Recognizing the role and contributions of teachers and staff of Amherst County Public Schools in building and enhancing the well-being of this community, and whereas education and knowledge are the foundation of the current and future strengths of Amherst County, Virginia, whereas teachers and other education staff have earned and deserved the respect of their students, families, and community for their selfless dedication of the teachers and staff to community service and the futures of the children within Amherst County. Whereas despite school closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic, teachers and other education staff have stepped up to new ways to support their students and communities, including coordinating remote learning, supporting the mental health of students, providing meals to students in need, and distributing technology to students. Whereas the purpose of this resolution is to celebrate their accomplishments of the 2020-21 school year and to raise awareness of the unquantifiable contributions of teachers and other education staff and promote greater respect and understanding for education in Amherst County. And whereas this board understands the education of our children is our highest priority, be it hereby resolved that the Amherst County Public School Board members jointly and as individuals thank the teachers and other education staff for persevering through this school year, caring for all students, and upholding our goal of meeting the needs of every child every day.
Amen. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve this resolution as presented.
Second. So I can move to second to approve this one resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Thank you so much.
Okay, my COVID-19 update is very brief. We are doing very well. We are all the way down to five cases per 100,000.
Wow.
We're seeing zero, one, I'm talking about Amherst County, and very few in the schools. And once vaccinations occurred, our staff quarantines went down completely. So I believe that the mitigation strategies that were put in place this year have gotten us to this point. So I just wanted to share just that last piece of data while we still have schools, students in schools, and that's where we ended up this year. So very pleased with that. Any questions regarding COVID? I'm sure we don't want to talk about it much. All right, number three is the 2021-2022 Continuity of Services Plan. So the CARES Act funds the $7.2 million. In order, so the federal government puts what you have to do to make sure you get that money. One of the things that they asked all school divisions to do was to post their plan for return on their website. So we had to do that by June 1. Even though you guys had not approved the plan, we had to put it out there by June 1 to meet, to make sure that we met what they had asked us to do. That plan is flexible. They do understand that most school divisions by June 1 hadn't put the plans together. But if you look at it, it's just a more detailed version of what we talked about specifically with mitigation strategies. That's all. All of that is in there. And, you know, it's there because, number one, we want to make sure that our community knows specifically what we're getting ready to do. But if there are changes along the way, say the Executive Order 79 gets changed, we'll go directly into that document and make those changes to our health strategies. I just wanted you guys to know that that was out there, that's sitting there on our website. We're actually going to have to, once we write the grant for the CARES Act three monies, we're going to have to have some public hearings on that. And so there's some of the other requirements. So this is making sure that our community knows what the plan is and what the plan to spend the money is as well.
What is the title of this? That's on the website?
It's the Continuity of Services Plan.
Yes, if you go to the left-hand side of the opening page on the website, it's the 2020-21 Instructional Plan and Continuity of Services.
It's very similar to what the state required of us last year when we had to submit our plans to the state. The changes are the changes that I've informed you of. Any questions about that one? Understand though, that it is a, it is a working document.
Okay.
Okay. Curriculum Development Policy. So several months ago, Ms. Thompson made a motion and the board passed that motion to have staff work on a policy that would allow for the board to have, well, two things, to allow for our community to have greater access and ability to speak to curriculum that was being put into place in Amherst County, also to have some ability to speak to what is being put in place. As you know, and I'll pull it, can we pull it up? So we have a policy currently, it's IF, and the first paragraph of IF is our current policy. And basically, it says that the school board is required to, to meet or exceed the requirements of the Code of Virginia and regulations of the Virginia Board of Education, and at minimum shall be aligned to the standards of learning. So the standards of learning, the Code of Virginia, the Virginia Board of Education, things that are regulated by that, we're required to do those things. What I've added is the second paragraph, curriculum not regulated by the Code of Virginia or aligned with the Virginia Board of Education standards of learning shall be subject to a public review and local school board approval process. The superintendent will be required to create and update guidelines and procedures for this review and approval process. And as we move forward, we've also done the regulation, right? So when it says that I would have a guidelines and procedures, the next piece of this is the regulations. And so what that document talks about, the first paragraph talks about putting the curriculum committees together, that it would be my responsibility to put a diverse group of people with diverse interests on these committees when curriculum is being developed in non-SOL, VDOE, Code of Virginia curriculum. The second and third paragraph talks about the public review and comment portion. These paragraphs are almost word for word from what the state of Virginia does with its public review and comments. And the final paragraph then talks about once that all happens, how the curriculum is given to you for a first reading, then it comes back a month later for a second reading and approval or denial. And as many of the things that the Virginia State Board does, they are required to post their reasons for denying a certain curriculum. So I'm using the language from the Department of Education. And so this allows us to make sure that, and I believe Ms. Thompson, and you can speak to this, is, I believe, gets us close to what you were talking about initially. But what I'm doing is giving this to you so you can provide me feedback. I did have our council look at it earlier this evening, and at first glance, he thought it was, it met its, that dotted the i's and crossed its t's, but he would like some more time with it. So I would like to be able to get some feedback from the board so I could bring you, if it doesn't need to change, fine. If it does need to change, we can make those adjustments. But my hope is, is that in, hopefully July 1 reading, August 2nd reading, but if that is too fast a timeline, we can go August, September, just to say as well that we won't develop any curriculum outside of those areas until this is passed. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions about this? And did it, does it meet, I guess, the intent of the original motion, do you believe?
Somewhat, yeah.
Okay.
We're getting there.
Okay, we're getting there. Good. So I will just await just comments to give you time to read it and look over it. So the next piece, SRO, SRO update. So we have, we actually have our meeting with Sheriff Fire on Monday. They've had a, they're going through an accreditation process, so they've been doing a lot of, a lot of different stuff as well. And so he's going to meet with Dr. Wells and I on Monday to kind of work towards our MOU agreement. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to tell you guys that they are currently down, or we are currently down, two SROs. So as you know, we have four, but we only have two right now. And they are in the process of trying to find two more for our schools. Any questions, Ms. Wright, on the SRO?
No, you have my statement or?
I do.
Okay.
I still have that.
Okay.
And the 2021-2022 School Board Meeting Dates. So you have attached the proposed calendar, right? So this is, this is what it has looked like for years and years, and it is the second Thursday, except for the July 15. There are, we have the area legislators, we have the two retreats, we have the, we've made note of during budget times whether we need to come back for a second time. I also want you to know too, that it has, it has always been the assumption that, that anytime it's necessary, a second meeting can occur in a month. And so this is, this is not, I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight. I want you to have it. I want you to see it, and I want your feedback in terms of, is that what you would like, or would you like to look at something different?
Board members, I've tried to mention to a few of you that I just feel like I am struggling to keep up. So much information is coming at us so fast. I'd like to make the recommendation that we go to, back to two meetings a month. I know when we went to one, it seemed to work with us, but I think right now we have so many things on our plate to stay in front of it, and on top of it, it might be who has to go to two. Don't know what your pleasure would be, but that would benefit me. I think we'd be more productive.
I agree, and it's very difficult to keep up right now with so much coming at us. And I think two meetings a month would be a big help.
I agree with that.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Grace?
I mean, I think we would kind of mentioned it, I mean, for how, for how long? I mean, if it's for the remainder, if it's for short term as we get over some challenges. I mean, I have no, no problem with the commitment. I'm just, you know, I think about also staff that is, that's here. Of course, we're all here doing the work of the division, so, but yeah, I just, I don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. I think if we have some purposeful things to take care of, or if, you know, I'd like to see what the breakdown of the meetings would look like. I don't want to be here twice a month hearing the same report twice a month. I just think that's not productive for all of us. But if we have a meaningful agenda, absolutely, I concur that if it's necessary, it's necessary.
Would we, would there be, like, the second meeting was specific to certain things versus how this first meeting goes? So maybe the second meeting, you have more time with policy, like specific to, you know what I'm saying? So you kind of break out what you're doing every meeting instead of just splitting up this meeting, that you actually have the time to look at, think about policies that are out there, to talk about them, that kind of thing. And so I don't, I don't know how other divisions currently do it. I certainly can, can look into it and see the folks that do two a month. I know the Board of Supervisors, they have a slightly different structure from the first one to the second one, even it starts at a different time. But I know one of them is much, much shorter based on what's on it. So I'm open to any suggestions.
That's all I was advocating, some kind of framework for what we're going to do at each one, instead of just having, I don't think there's a necessity for the same format at each meeting.
Yeah, because we literally spend a week.
Policy issues and things.
Well, I think there's different agenda items that we need to talk about. I mean, each meeting's going to be pretty much the same. I mean, you don't have to go over the same content. You don't have to do a report from every single department.
Exactly. And that's what I was saying, just what's that framework going to look like, you know, going forward?
I guess as long as there's not the expectation that there's exactly the same content, you know, that there's not a report from HR twice, if they don't need to have a report from HR.
I would agree with that.
Was that?
I would agree with that.
You would agree with it?
No reason to double up and put extra work on the staff.
So what that means is, is that we will put another calendar together. We'll email it to you and let you look at it and see what your thoughts about those are. And in the meantime, I'll also look at other school divisions just from a structural standpoint. I've not ever been involved in a two-per-month school division.
Well, I think what happened in the area, everybody
Well, I think what happened in the area, everybody went to one. The conversation here in Amherst was that, you know, the other boards, so let's not compare, said one is enough. I think what is happening, we went through some unusual times here. I mean, we had COVID, which consumed a third of a meeting every time. You know, that won't be forever, I pray, you know? We've had a lot of, I mean, we spent a good amount of time with public comment, and that's not a problem. I'm just saying that sometimes it seems like, you know, we're in a longer meeting. And yes, we have, agreeable, we've had a lot of things that are coming up, but, you know, policies won't be every day. I'm game for it, you know? We can come twice a month, but we tried that, and then everybody said, no, we don't wanna do that, so, but that was other people. So, I'm okay for it as long as you're right. It doesn't put a lot of work on staff, and, you know, sometime we've already put something on that agenda for that second Thursday, but we can always make a change. But maybe as we decrease with the things that we're trying to look at, we can look at it again, you know, but.
Maybe we can do more where we can have more open comment from the public, let them come in and talk with us. I know we always offer that, but we may be able to do that specifically.
True. Are you not taking the show on the road like we did before?
Well, we haven't yet because.
I know because of COVID, but I think we should plan on that because I think that might address some of this issue. I keep popping up with people saying they didn't know, they didn't know about this, they didn't know about that. If we come into your area and you can be at the meeting, so I know because of COVID, we had to stop that. So, yeah, I'd like to just see that come back. I like that.
Maybe have one meeting here and then one on the road every month?
Well, it'll be, I guess it'll be determined.
On the road is this, is the technology.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to have every.
So much different.
Yeah. Yeah, the video, oh, do we lose that totally if we go on the road?
Well, we.
It'd be a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, I'm just, I just wanna advocate for my staff who I know work on this night for a full week.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what we need to hear.
I just, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't advocate for the amount of work that these folks, I mean, when you guys say the amount of detail and preparation that goes in, that's for a reason.
Right.
And.
Well, we weren't recording it, yeah, before.
I don't wanna lose that either.
Yeah, we weren't doing this before.
From meeting to meeting.
Okay.
So, I guess it's a pleasure of the majority. I think everybody said yes for two meetings.
Well, I don't want you to, you hadn't voted on it yet. You need to vote on a calendar.
Yes, what I'm saying is that's what you all said.
Did you say we're gonna get a different calendar?
Oh, you will, okay.
All right, we'll wait on that.
So, we'll have to wait and vote on that one in July?
All right. You know, we, in November, we'd be careful with two meetings with the V SBA and maybe Maybe vacations, so, you know. Bring it back to us and let us see what we can, what the board can do with it.
And my final piece is the V SBA conference in Williamsburg is November 17th through the 19th, and this year, we have the lodge. So, we will be on site instead of having to drive from hotel to the actual conference. We have booked rooms for everybody, but we can also cancel those rooms. So, what I am asking is to look at your calendars or decide where, what you think you want to do, and if you're a definite no, just let us know so we can, we can cancel them as soon as possible. But if you're not, certainly if you're not ready to make that decision in the near future, we still have time, but I'd like to get that out there as soon as possible. November 17th through the 19th, so it's a Wednesday to Friday, and the Friday ends about noon. And the Wednesday starts a little afternoon, so it's basically two full days. Madam Chair, that is all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have teachers in the block schedule that teach during their planning or their
Currently, right now?
Yes, current year.
Those that teach that additional section are paid for those additional sections. So, if they, we don't, we have four teachers, five teachers throughout the division that have picked up an extra section where they may have a class on an A day that they teach, but they have B day that's open where they don't teach, so they get some kind of planning. But we do have that, those are, we ask those teachers at the beginning of the year, they tell us whether or not they want to do that. If they do that, they receive additional funding for that.
Okay, do they just get like that portion of their regular day's pay?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Crouch can probably answer specifically what that is, but it's a sixth of their day, I guess.
And do we have teachers that get paid for subbing? Like, if you need a substitute in a room, does a teacher go in and sub? It's not like a regular thing that they do, they just do it as a substitute?
I don't, I'd have to check on that. I don't wanna answer that.
Nobody's paid to do.
At one time, Dr. Burnham, were you working on that concept?
At the high school, if a teacher is substituting during their duty period, they do get paid during that time. But if, during their planning period, if it's during their duty period, they do not get extra compensation for that. It's their regular duty, just like hall duty or cafeteria duty. But we did make that change this year.
How much time do they have for duty and how much time do they have for planning each day?
We have split, and I gotta double check on this, but I believe it's 45 minutes for the subbing, and we've worked a sub schedule, so sometimes during a block schedule, we'll have two teachers come in so that we don't have one teacher subbing the whole time if they aren't getting paid.
So, there's like a block of 90 minutes, and then half of that's a duty and half of that's planning for a teacher on a normal basis?
That's right.
Okay, so then the teacher would have their planning for 45, then they would go sub, and they would get paid for subbing, right?
Can you repeat that one more time?
So, they get their planning period for 45 minutes?
Yes.
And then their duty period is when they sub, and they don't get paid?
Correct.
But if they.
Cause they have to have their.
Do their duty, and then during their planning period they sub, they get paid?
Correct. Cause you have to give teachers the planning time uninterrupted.
Right.
And so, if they, and it's a voluntary basis, and so, we don't pull teachers during their planning. That's something extra that they can do and they can give up, but if they give that up, then we do compensate them for that at the high school.
And is there any scenario you can think of that a teacher would be teaching an extra class but would not get paid for that?
I can't think of one. Not in my building.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right. Ms. Terry, we gonna move on down. What you got?
Yes, ma'am. So, as far as, you know, extra committees on the STEM board, and we did have a phone meeting here recently, or a Zoom meeting, I guess it was, wrapping up the school year. You know, everybody's busy with their own graduations and that kind of thing. Outside of that, thanks to Amherst County High School for putting on all of the programs that they did at the end of the year. It was a busy last couple of weeks, that's for sure, between sporting events, baseball, tennis, the Golden A's, senior recognition, all those things. It was, it was nonstop, but you guys did a good job keeping it all together. We were able to get out and see the Lion King the other night, and for those, if you missed it, it was, it was an awesome, awesome program. As always, their, the theater group does a phenomenal job, so hats off to all of them. Thanks for the speakers to come and speak to us tonight. Always like to hear the public come and speak. Wish Dr. McGinnis was still here, congratulate him on his new, new role. I know Madison Heights will miss him, and Ms. Wheeler on her promotion. It's an awesome thing. Mr. Cock, thank you for everything, and good luck in your retirement. Sorry Dr. Wells couldn't be with us, but he is out of here for a very good reason. So, I'm proud of his son for his accomplishments. Ms. Smith, thank you very much on the recognition we've gotten earlier. And the summer school program at being at 650 students, that's a phenomenal number. It's quite a challenge and still be able to get all the teachers and everybody that you need to make that happen. You figure it's what, twice as many, at least twice as many students as normal? Unfortunately, we have that many students that actually need it, but making it available and making it happen is, speaks volumes for the effort on everyone that's put in to make sure that the kids are getting what they need. Yeah, this year was, was tough on the teachers, tough on the students, tough on the administration. Everybody did what they could do to get everybody where they are, and now this will be kind of a catch-up. So, hats off to everybody for getting them where they are, and thank you for taking the extra steps to get them completed in the summer. So, we look forward to next year being a different, hopefully better, more, a little smoother year, and we shall see what next year brings. Thank you very much.
Ms. Crouch?
Madam Chair, no committee report, CIP committee. We hadn't met since the last meeting. I sincerely echo all of Mr. Terry's comments, just to kind of, to add something on that. I'm glad, last day of school, difficult school year, can't wait to get back to some more normalcy next year. Hopefully, the masks mitigation things will be gone. I know that's a big concern. Lion King was awesome. Graduation was really nice. Enjoyed all of that. And to conclude my comments this evening, I am glad that we, you have to fact-check me on this, I think we were the only division to be able to do a pay raise at the beginning of this fiscal year in July 1 and do the bonus, when others were just doing the bonus. So, I was glad that we can at least show our appreciation to the staff in both those physical, fiscal gestures. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you to our community that came out and spoke with us tonight, and also to those that took the time out to send us an email to be read into the record. And also a big thank you to everybody that put on our graduation. Even though it rained for part of it, it was, it was great. Created some great memories there for Amherst and their families. And also to Mr. Cock, we're gonna miss you so much, and, you know, good luck to you and whatever you're gonna be doing now, maybe down at the beach with Mr. Terry, I don't know. And also, it's a little sad today without our student reps, they're not here today.
And I would just let you know I'm interviewing right now.
Oh, you are?
I believe the expectation is, is that we'll start in August with them, so, but, yeah, I think you'll, we'll be pleased. A good, a good group of candidates.
All right. And I think that about wraps it up. Thank you again to everybody, and let's go Lancers.
Thank you. So, I don't have a committee report hour, Governor School's done, but I'm looking forward to seeing how this block scheduling works out, because I've never seen that play out in the way that you've described it. So, I think it's gonna be good for the kids. Like everybody else said, congratulations to Mr. McGinnis and Ms. Wheeler. And I'll just keep it short and sweet, thanking everybody again, getting us through another year of weirdness. But I wanna say, my daughter brought home her yearbook from elementary school, and they had a page in there where all the students were asked about this past year and what they had to say about it. And they were all so positive and so encouraging and so adaptive, that it really kind of took me aback as an adult. I think we get a little complacent and easy on, you know, to go to the negative, and I was just, it really, really did encourage me to see those little kids, some of the comments they made at such a young age on a, on a year that is going to live forever in their life, and that they were just so excited to go back next year. They were, they're ready for it. So, I really enjoyed that. So, if you, if you have a Temperance one, just look at the page, cause it was very encouraging. The other students, the other schools may have done it too, but I was very encouraged. That's all I have.
Stu?
I wanna say that I really enjoyed the Elan and the Temperance art show that we got online. That was a unique way to present that, but it was very, very enjoyable. I also wanna thank you, everybody on staff that's worked so hard for the graduation, even in the rain. It was a fun event, and it was just a nice time to celebrate. I just want to thank all of the staff that have, that have worked, is in the process of retiring. We will miss you. I know we had the ceremony, but as board members, we didn't get to say a whole lot that night, but your service has been truly valuable. Just want you to know that you're appreciated. I'm excited about the summer learning numbers too. And I want to give a special thank you, which we've tried to do tonight with the bonus. Just want to, an extra special thank you to the teachers and the students, the parents, bus drivers, food services, nurses. As I was trying to think about coming into tonight, I was almost like a video rewound, and I could picture the buses with handing out the lunches and where we were, you know, a year ago, where we were back in August and September. And it has been a very difficult year, teaching in the classroom, teaching online, double duty, home visits, taking temperatures, you know, just trying to get the kids in and out on the buses. It just has been such team effort, and I just wanna say thank you to everyone. And everything you've done has not gone unnoticed. We just really appreciate it. And Mrs. Crouch, I know that I really appreciate you giving us this information on teacher salaries and where we are in bands, and I was real excited where we were at the end of last year. Looks like we have a little bit of work to do to get back where we were, but we're still right up there at the top, and I just think that, you know, that reflects how proud we are of our teachers and our staff. But we have much more work to do in trying to help say thank you. So, just wanna say happy summer to everybody, and thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm just gonna be brief. I want to give all congratulations, those who retired, those who worked for us dutifully and faithfully for all the years. And Ms. Cock, you know, we have, go back a minute, and I miss you so much. Thank you for everything you've done, and all those others who are listening tonight. And we do, as the board said, and I won't be too redundant, but we appreciate, the word appreciative is, it goes a long way for those who have been working. I remember the Pearl Harbor incident, and the president at that time said that this day will go down in infamy, infamy. And I think that this year is definitely gonna go down in history. But I, I must be looking at the other side of the spectrum, because I'm thankful. I'm thankful that none of the children got COVID and died. I mean that, because I've seen that happen. I'm thankful that our employees, even though they might have caught it, survived it for the most part, and I'm thankful that we all still sitting here able to breathe and talk. I'm hoping that this county will come together once again, all the comments that were made tonight, all the letters that were read. We do appreciate every comment and every letter. We want you to continue to talk with us. And we're saying some good things now, and I hope that we can continue to do that. It does take everybody to pitch in to make things work out. There are gonna be complaints about the time that we go back to school and the block schedule, but let us say this, that we're trying, we are trying to do what is best for the entire county. And those who like to get up early and wanna come to school early, we hope that we have made you happy. Those who can stay in a little later, we're sorry about that. So, I have high schoolers as well, gotta get up and get back into action. So, as I close, I'm thankful that we made it through this school year. It is the last day of school. I used to get excited and cry on the last day of school, because I wanted to see my friends. And my grandsons and all them today, they don't wanna leave their friends either, so. But before you know it, August will be here, so I hope that we all have a good summer. I know that it's so much work going on. I think what we don't understand, those who are listening out there, all of this information that was given to us tonight, I have a folder of papers here, incredible, a computer paper. Things are getting done. For those who think that we're not working it out, that, not me, but that these people are not working it out, I don't know how you could see that, because it takes a lot of work. 650 kids getting ready to go to summer school. Somebody gotta drive them, feed them, and teach them. So, I, I can't walk in your shoes, but I wanna thank you so much for what you've done. Enjoy your bonus, Amherst County Public School family. Go out and buy yourself something exciting, and cheers to all of you, and good night. Good night. We are going into closed session, but I'm saying good night to those who. We are going into closed session, but I'm saying good night to those who, those who are at home going, Lord, thank you, they're finished.
Madam Chair, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 and A2 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended this board convene a closed meeting for the following: A1 Personnel Matters and A2 Student Matter.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, we are into closed session.
Ah.
Ah.
and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas 22.3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the Amherst County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Motion to certify?
Make a motion to certify?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion to adjourn?
No, we got to make a motion on the...
Oh, that's right.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for religious exemption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My fault, sorry. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? No, no, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's okay.
Dr. Arnold, may I ask, can my question ask real quick? Okay.